All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our work session for today, October 8th. We have to all of our guests, welcome. We're in the training room to have the opportunity to be a little more casual conversation. I'm Trenae Tweedy, Mayor, for those who don't know me. And what I'm going to do is ask that everyone go around the room and introduce themselves, just so we know everyone, and then I'll defer to the city manager after that. But thank you very much. Starting with Mr. Massey.
Massey Ware. I'm with the TCV Trust and Wealth Management and a member of the Airport Commission.
Thank you.
I'm Debbie Allen. I am the representative from Bedford County on the Airport Commission, and I'm a CPA in public practice right now.
Thank you.
My name's Bob Day. I'm on the Airport Commission. Twenty-six years in the Navy as a Navy pilot off of aircraft carriers, and then another eighteen at the Raytheon Company doing strategic planning for the company.
Thank you.
I'm Jeff Helgeson. I didn't get a number like everybody else did, but so apparently I think there's a -- do you have number one down there, Massey? Or -- oh, yeah, so Massey's number one. I'm on City Council and glad to be with you all to discuss today.
I'm Randy Nelson, City Council, and I'll share my number with you.
I'm a member of Sterling Wilder, City Council member for Ward Two.
Thank you.
Mary Jane Dolan, Ward One, City Council.
Turner Perrow, City Council, Ward Four. Glad to have everybody here today. Thanks for all your hard work.
I'm Bill Wright. I'm also on City Council. I'm a large member.
Bert Dodson Jr., Chair of the Airport Commission. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Manager, for having the joint meeting today.
Mark Courtney, soon-to-be retired Airport Director.
Good one.
I'm Jones Stanley. Thirty-three years and six days in the Navy. Retired Air Admiral. Thirty-three years with the airline. Total of fifty-seven years of being paid every month as a pilot. I retired September the thirtieth. From two thousand and nine to two thousand and fifteen, I was president of the Lynchburg Regional Airshow Corporation. Brought the Blue Angels here in two thousand and eleven, and I think a lot of you probably saw the show. And if all goes well, then we have a good time. We may get them back again. Good to be here. I'm a member of the Airport Commission.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Bonnie Severcek, City Manager and a member of the Airport Commission.
I'm Reeve Wodak, Deputy City Manager. General News Assistant City Manager.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Airport Commission, for coming down this afternoon. We're holding the joint meeting for City Council and the Lynchburg Regional Airport Commission to discuss the formation of an independent airport authority. And I will start with Ms. Severcek.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, and fellow Airport Commissioners. Several months ago, the Airport Commission began to discuss converting the Commission to an authority structure and has done a lot of research. And we have the consultant that did the bulk of the research here with us today, and he is prepared to make a presentation to you. But prior to that, I want to introduce -- reintroduce Mark Courtney, who is soon to be retired.
Can you come fast enough? Believe me, I'll be around. Steve Baldwin, as Bonnie mentioned, is the author of the report, is the founder and president of Steve Baldwin Associates, which offers a range of airport consulting services necessary for managing and developing airports in a safe, efficient, and effective manner. Steve specializes in particular in organizational management services for airports and is considered a national expert on airport governance and performance benchmarking. Prior to forming his own firm, Steve was a senior vice president for a large multinational aviation consulting firms, domestic aviation practice, and also served before that at the New York State Department of Transportation Aviation Division for fourteen years, where he was responsible for the day-to-day operations of Stewart International and Republic airports in New York. He also directed the state's planning and environmental programs for the various state-owned and operated airports, provided staff support for two governor-appointed commissions, and has been involved in various other airport-directed organizations in the past as well. He's been working with airports as a consultant as part of Steve Baldwin Associates for six years, and his clients include a wide range of primarily commercial service airports, at least in the governance area. And with that, I'll turn it over and introduce Steve Baldwin.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you, Mayor, City Manager. Thank you. And also the council members I met informally coming in, and a couple of aviators here on the panel, and I'm an aviator, so that helps me feel welcome. And my son works in a nuclear submarine program.
Oh, yes. I've heard of those guys.
I understand there's a clicker here. I don't know if it's this. We need to start. So, as Mark said.
Can you go to the microphone?
Sure. I've been involved in aviation airport management for thirty-eight years. I started as a public service, running airports for the state of New York. I moved into private practice, ran a multinational aviation consulting practice for a large engineering firm. We built that firm up over the years to about fifty-five million dollars in sales revenue per year. And eight years ago, I broke from that firm and started my own firm specializing in what we felt we do best, which is helping airport boards and their leadership work on policy matters such as this, governance models, performance benchmarking, efficiency and effectiveness, and so on. Mark had contacted me and alerted me to an opportunity to submit a competitive proposal for this assignment, and ultimately, we were selected. And I think for about six months now, we've been on this assignment, working with both the Airport Commission and the airport management team to assess the feasibility and the benefit of moving the airport governance model from a voluntary commission to a fully autonomous airport authority. So, Mark gave you an overview of who we are and what we do. Some of our current active clients are here at the bottom. These acronyms, all our airport designations, just like L-H-Y. But Minneapolis, St. Paul, Boise, St. Cloud, Grand Rapids, Asheville, Savannah, Manchester, Syracuse, Dayton, Traverse City, and others. So, we're pretty active, and we're pretty spread around the country. For a small group of seven staff, it keeps us hopping. So, here was the assignment. Take a look at the benefits of moving to a regional airport authority. And unlike most assignments that of this nature that were retained for, here you had done a lot of homework. Mark had done a lot of homework. The city had done a lot of homework. And so, usually, we come into these assignments and we start from scratch in a very educational process. But here, you had a great foundation of information that was laid out for you, and it was quality work. It was really excellent work. So, for us to pick up on that was more of a verification than it was to start from scratch. So, you know, why is this such an important topic? It seems to be somewhat mundane to the average person, but it is important because of the economic impact that the airport provides to the regional economy, which is enormous. And you wouldn't necessarily believe that of an airport of this size. But yes, your airport generates one hundred and eighty million dollars a year in regional economic impact to the community, and it's very important that the airport is run to the maximum efficiency that it can be run and to the benefit of the larger regional area that it serves. Seventeen-hundred-plus jobs, sixty-one million dollars in wages, and three-point-two million dollars in tax revenue coming off of those airport jobs back into your coffers. It's very, very important. The airport has a history of being a subsidy operation, not completely uncommon for an airport of this size. You broke away from that in two thousand and sixteen, and you have a trajectory of being profitable from that point forward. So, later in my slides, you'll see that this adds up to about eight million dollars in subsidy that the city has paid to keep this airport operating. But in return, you've gotten that one hundred and eighty million dollars a year of economic impact to your community. But what's not shown here is the fifty-six million dollars that the airport has been successful in getting in capital improvement grant money from the state and from the federal government. That's been free money to the city of Lynchburg to maintain the infrastructure at the airport. And that's important, because that's a sizable amount of money as well. And so, why now? Why look at it now? Well, there's probably not a better time in your airport's history to be looking at this. And a lot of times, airports call in during their strategic planning process as a matter of course to look at their governance model. And sometimes, they're already authorities, and they want to tweak that model, so it's not always a new creation. And sometimes, we go into airports and we're asked to look at the feasibility of creating an airport authority, and we don't always come up with it being very feasible, because they're running so well with whatever model they already have. But it's an opportunity to look at how the airport is running from a governance standpoint, how your bylaws are working for you, how your membership of your board is working for you, how your policy and procedures are working for you, how your approvals process is working for you. We talked a little bit about the numbers, and if you look at this over the eighteen-year period, that we included those deficit-plus-revenue-positive years, it's generated about three-point-two billion dollars of spinoff into your community. That's pretty big. So, there's a history before we came on site, clearly. This has been a topic that's been in discussion here for almost twenty years. You've had, during this timeframe, witnessed downturns in the air service at your airport. You lost Delta through them pulling out. We've watched consolidations and mergers in the airline industry, and today, you're down to American Airlines serving your airport as a feeder into Charlotte. And we think that's a little bit risky, and we think you need to really strive hard to get a second carrier in here, and we think an authority model will help you to do that. You also have enabling legislation that was created, and I believe, two thousand and ten here in the state of Virginia, that allows communities to opt into an authority governance model relatively easily. Other places that we operate in, we actually have to start at the State House and create that legislation at the state level. We recently did the transfer of the Gerald R. Ford International Airport in Grand Rapids, Michigan, which is a very sophisticated business economy around that region. And they all felt that it was in the best interest of their business economy to have that airport as an authority. But we went up to the State House, because we had to start that enabling legislative process, and the legislators in the State House told us, "Don't come up here with a one-up piece of legislation. If we're going to do this, we want that legislation to be able to be opted in by airports throughout Michigan." And so, now, we're doing Traverse City, Michigan, as well. Here in Virginia, you have -- all of these airports have opted into the authority governance model since that legislation was created or prior with independent legislation. But you still hold out here as a city governance model for the airport. We'll talk a little bit about what that means. Outside of Virginia, there's been a number of other airports that have seen merit to move to an airport authority governance model, and here's just some examples of them. But they do range in size and geography. So, our assignment was to come in and collect this information and data to get out and talk to stakeholders. I believe my team came in and interviewed all the airport board members, many of the city members and city staff, city managers, and I don't know if we touched with some of the council members or not, but some of you have dual roles. We also collected financial data. We looked at process flow of your organization and how decision-making is done relative to your airport and within the city structure, and conducted other analysis. So, what we basically found is that the model that's set up from Dayton is a legacy model. I'm sorry. Lynchburg is a legacy model. It's not unusual to have this model. There are many airports remaining in the country that still have this model. But it is within the industry being identified as a dated model and not one that -- you know, there's no airport in this country that's moving to this model. There's not one. Everybody is moving away from this model. The authority governance model proposal that was, I believe, started with Mark's efforts is a very valid proposal, because it provides the single business focus on your airport that you need to keep this momentum you have going with the airport in the future, to protect that airport in the future, to allow it to make decisions in a business format that the airlines and other business operators can do business with you. I was in Traverse City two weeks ago, talking to that board, and I had two people in the audience I didn't anticipate. I had some tenants of the airport, some of the high-level tenants of the airport, and also had a member of United Airlines Vice President of Properties show up at the meeting. And they both indicated that meeting, that they prefer to do their business dealings with an authority, because it's more streamlined, it's more businesslike, and it's shielded from politics, and that's important for them. The economic impact is significant, but we think it can be built on. You have opportunities for land development, for bringing in maintenance operations, additional FBO services, whether they're growing your existing FBO operators or assisting them to grow or bringing in new operators, and that diversification in air service that we think is really important to you can be better handled through an authority model. And then, the revenue stream, setting an authority up properly so that it is wholly self-funded and self-sustaining will help to protect that revenue stream. And we'll talk a little bit about some of the numbers that came out of the city. The airport actually pays a fair amount of money for city services that it doesn't really use, and that's just a function of the city governance model. It's not a -- that's not a stab at the city. That's just the way government runs. But that in itself will save the airport. North of a hundred thousand dollars a year, that money can be invested into air service development to attract another carrier. So, we would advocate for that. So, we talk a little bit about why the model is dated and what can be done about that. And here, we say, you know, the current decision-making processes are a little bit of an impediment. It's just that they're strung out, and they backloop into each other. A proposal is identified here at the airport, and it goes through the Commission, then it comes to the council, then it comes back to the Commission, and then finally, the Airport Director gets the green light to do something. We have to get that sort of streamlined, so.
Can you go backward?
I'll try. I'm good at that.
You said it has to go.
From the Airport Commission.
Yeah.
To council. Why does it have to go back to the Commission?
It does. It is the way you're structured, and I have a slide that goes to that process flow in a minute.
So, you can fix that process flow by not having it go back to the Commission, because you have the governing body says, "Here's what we're going to do."
Yeah.
And they vote on it, and that's -- I think that was the definitive action.
Yeah. Well, we can talk about that. Like, at the end, we can talk about the alternatives, because I do want to talk about them.
But generally, we don't have to take it back to the Commission.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
The passion of City Council.
Yeah, because we had a couple of those recently, and we.
Or a lease or whatever, then it goes back to the administration.
Yeah.
In terms of executing a lease.
So, when we talk about the importance of having that business acumen at the table and having a singular business focus on everything that occurs at the airport, this is where it gets lost. Within the eighteen city departments, and there's nobody that is within this structure the champion of the airport within the city. It's a busy structure, and there's priorities that are being pulled in every single direction you can imagine, I'm sure. And the airport is just one of those competing resources out there. Whereas, when you have an airport authority, the singular focus of that airport authority is the airport, and it can make decisions for the airport at its table and try to advance that airport forward, and that's a big deal. Here's this process flow diagram. So, you know, currently, you have a little bit of a convoluted structure where proposals come out of an advisory commission that doesn't really have any statutory powers behind it, can't really make decisions that binds the city. It comes up through, it comes to the City Council. The City Council gets an opportunity to weigh in on that. It comes back down for implementation, or it could die on the vine, right? Whereas, with an authority model, it's a little more -- it's quite a bit more streamlined, and safeguards can effectively be built in so that the city doesn't lose control of the airport. And that's always a question that we are faced with when we support these proposals, because the members of the Board of the Authority will be appointed by the city, or if there's a second sponsor of the Authority, a partnership of the sponsor in the city. So, you'll still have your representations on the Board. You're just allowing those decisions and business processes to be decided at that table at the airport and get that streamlined. And what we hear from the business community is that's how they want it. I don't think an airline's come in to meet with City Council. I'll be willing to make that bet, that airlines not come here to meet with the City Council. So, but an airline could come in, meet with an Airport Authority Board, and an airline can walk out with a deal, and that's what we want. So, we talked about this a little bit, and we talked about wanting to strengthen financial So, having that business mindset, decision-making processes that support that mindset, and having a champion entity. Usually, in the process of setting up an airport authority, they'll be given a very -- you know, you'll have a very structured role and mission statement in those governing documents that establish the authority, and you'll help define what their singular purpose for the airport is, which is going to be to promote the economic -- the transportation economic benefit of the airport to the region and to assure economic self-sufficiency. It allows the airport to charge rates and charges that need to be charged to keep the airport economically feasible. It allows the airport to go out and find new business that helps it to keep it economically feasible, and so on. And so, we talked about the impact and the numbers and the three-point-two billion. So, that's how those numbers all wind up. And then, we think, again, as I mentioned, having increased revenue opportunity. You have to have a proactive authority board membership, or else, you know, people are coming to the airport as a -- and it's not a slight towards the Commission, but you need to have partners as your board members with the airport management in order to promote that airport. And those partners have linkages back into the business community that further extend those tentacles, and it's very, very important. So, we talked about some of the process flow. The indirect cost allocations, without boring you in the numbers, are the fact that the airport uses very little IT service from the city, but gets charged a full departmental allocation for IT services. It has a pension liability that the city burdens with an underfunded pension liability burdened by the airport. There's other services that go side, you know, hand-in-hand with running an eighteen-department city. The Authority wouldn't be burdened as much by those allocations, yet the Authority would have the flexibility to enter into intermunicipal agreements and continue those services under agreed-upon terms if it's beneficial for the airport to do so. If it's not beneficial for the airport to do so, the Authority would have the autonomy to go out and seek those services through other means, and that usually means an increase in efficiency and effectiveness for the management of the airport. Pension liabilities would actually reduce with an airport authority for the city, because you'd be moving those employees that are at the airport into the Virginia pension system and taking it off of the city's employee count. There's an actuarial that gets performed to make that all happen, but you'd actually have a slight reduction in the city workforce numbers by moving those employees into the Authority. I think there's about eighteen or nineteen employees at the airport. And we think that while you've been generating some surpluses here, that this is a fairly narrow surplus, and this needs to be worked on more. But I also think that by moving to an Authority, and once you have that settled and in place, you'll be able to immediately see an increase in this surplus of somewhere north of a hundred thousand dollars a year to start, and then hopefully, an Authority will be focused to grow that as a very specific mission of theirs to watch the financial health of the airport going forward. Some business opportunities that we see at the airport, maintenance, repair, overhaul. You know, it's funny, I fly into this airport, and you actually have a pretty robust general aviation market here. You have quite a few business jets on your ramp. You have quite a few general aviation aircraft on your ramp. You have a great flight school operation going on here, and we don't see that as much in airports this size nationally, so that's to your credit. But take that as a strength and build on it, and that's what an Airport Authority Board could help you do. You have land parcels. I know in the past, there was a discussion about a joint county airpark proposal. That should be pursued more vigorously. And then, this investment in marketing and business development. Some people may say, "Look, the airport's fine. It works great. It looks beautiful." It's vulnerable. You have one airline serving your airport. If that airline leaves this airport, you'll be really wish -- you will, y'all, will -- you don't want to be looking over your shoulder saying, "We should've, could've, would've." It really is -- it's time is now that you have to put everything into this to diversify that risk you have in one business partner, so. New air service. These are some specifics. I know the airport team has been working on some of this. Enhance FBO, I mentioned, and rates and charges aligned with industry norms. I don't think your rates and charges are going to increase that significantly. I don't know that they would increase at all. We may find new forms of revenue instead of trying to just increase existing forms of revenue. I think that should be a major goal. But it would give the Airport Authority the autonomy to adjust those rates and charges so that it has its cash covered to run the airport. So, here in summary is, you know, increase management efficiencies, get that singular-focused business mindset in place, and have a nimble operating environment. And that's really -- those were the key findings of the work that we performed for you. I'm going to take -- open up for discussion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Severcek, did you have anything else you wanted to say before we open it up for discussion?
I would only add that our goal today is for the council to provide staff with direction one way or the other, to either move forward with the development of an airport authority or to not.
Thank you.
You have two resolutions.
Mm-hmm.
Steps necessary.
Thank you.
I just have two clarifying questions. No opinion as of yet. On your notes, you talked about the other authorities in Virginia, but there's -- there are authorities and authorities/commissions. Is there a difference between the two?
The ones that are labeled authorities/commissions may have the name of a commission, but they're enabled under the Authority statute, and they act and perform as an authority.
So, legislative.
So, Richmond, Richmond, as an example, is actually called a commission. Legislatively, it's acting under your Authority statute.
Theoretically, if you were to perceive it as, we could call it a commission as well.
I would research that and find that answer for you. Yeah.
The enabling legislation calls it a authority.
Okay. All right. And secondly, as far as the savings go, and this question is really from Ms. Severcek, as far as the savings for the city-provided services, so I'm showing on page sixteen, one hundred and sixty-one thousand or so, plus risk management, about two hundred thousand total. But those are real costs for the city, so if the Authority is not paying for those costs, that means that that amount will effectively be redistributed across all the city departments. It puts a hole in our budget. Is that an actual transfer or just a paper act?
It's a transfer. It's an actual transfer from the airport to the general fund. So, we wouldn't be providing the services potentially in the future, so we would not be getting that revenue.
But it's a fixed cost for us, isn't it?
No, it varies.
It depends on the amount of service that's delivered in any given year, and based on employee costs and overhead.
Okay.
But on the overhead, what he's asking, I think, is going to be there regardless of this department. I mean, so if you have the overhead, you have your time, you have lots of different things that, you know, I think the way he presented it was the fact that you don't have to pay that, but as Turner's saying, unless you're getting rid of those people that were providing that service, that cost is still going to be there.
So, we will certainly still have people in the Finance Department and the IT Department. The airport can choose, if it becomes an Authority, it can choose to contract with the city or go outside the parameters of the city to contract.
But if it doesn't at all, then there's a -- basically, a fixed cost will need to be picked up by the rest of the departments.
Correct.
Okay. Those are my two questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. So--
So, I also have just a couple of clarifying questions. You cited a list of airports that have moved to the authority model. Have they found that that has come with increased bargaining power at the, you know, when they're talking with airlines about services?
Most, the recent examples are Syracuse, Grand Rapids, and Asheville, North Carolina. And if you were to Google any three of those, you would, and they're all done within the last two, three years, you would see their performance increase significantly after they created an authority. And it's not really a magic bullet. What's happened is, because of the attention brought in creating the authority, and new member thinking that was brought on board, got those airports to go back and look at how they were doing business and number of their business processes, and those airports all have, you know, they're a little larger, so they have concessions programs, they have more than one airline. And then they've gone through and they've been able to use that, you know, newfound horsepower to bring those business partners back to the table and get them to invest more and create more revenue at the airport. So all three of them have performed extremely well after they've gone to an authority. All three of them also moved to an authority during a time where we've had economic expansion too, so, out of fairness, right?
If I might just add to that, it also enables through that greater efficiency and nimbleness and streamlining to allow the airport to be, to be able to prioritize, airport management to prioritize air service development much more, because oftentimes through a much more involved bureaucratic process, staff with a very small department like we have just becomes too overwhelmed with being able to, to be able to really concentrate and prioritize air service development, being so small, and this will free that up to maintain, ensure the air service development is a top priority.
So let's say revenue decreases. I know it's projected to increase, and that's great, but let's say it decreases, and ultimately, you know, it's operating at a deficit. Who is the responsible party in that?
It would be the sponsors. The sponsors are still going to have to, you know, back the bank, and, you know, our feeling is, because this is generating, you know, 3.2 billion over 20 years to the region, your sponsors should be more than just the city. You know, the city for 18 years sustained deficit to run this airport, and it's really not fair by the other governing entities around here, because those municipalities and the people that live in them have all benefited from this airport, right? So now you're making a profit, but you would be best if you could bring in a sponsor partnership and create an authority. That doesn't mean it's necessary. And also too, doesn't mean it's necessary day one, it could happen two or three years in. We're working with an airport right now where it's a city-owned airport. There's three counties. Two of the counties have already opted into the formation of the authority, and they're working on the third county. But it's because those two counties do recognize that the airport is important to everybody, and they don't want to see that airport fail for their own benefit. It's located in a city, but it's so important to them, they want to be part of making sure it stays successful too.
So perhaps this is a question for the commission, then. What has the reaction been from our friends in surrounding counties?
I can answer that. We haven't gone out to the counties because this has, process to go through here as far as considering an airport authority. I would say after that point in time, if it's agreed upon by council to move forward, and I believe the city manager will reach out to the Campbell, Amherst, and Bedford counties, because we have members on our commission. Jones Stanley represents Amherst, obviously, Ms. Allen represents Bedford, and Mike Davidson, who's the head of the director of Campbell County, who's on vacation this week, represents Campbell County. But that's up to negotiating, and with city council, I would imagine, would be negotiating with the board supervisors of those counties. And it would probably be Campbell County, because the other two counties, probably in my estimation, they never had a dog in a fight, they don't have a joint acreage. The 900 acres of the airport is in Campbell County, but that's two to be determined.
All right, okay. Thank you.
And last time about, the second time we went through this process, I guess around 10 years ago, the commission actually went forward and formed teams to go out and meet with each one of the surrounding localities, and certainly the representatives from each of the outlined counties, to go and make presentations to the respective boards.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder?
Thank you so much for your presentation, I appreciate that. And also, thank you, Councilman Wright, I had a similar question as well, as far as what were the thoughts from the localities, if they were considering joining in the process as well? If they do, what are the ramifications as far as from the counties, as far as, I know there's, if there was a deficit? So would they be looked upon to support the authority as well, or would it maybe be Lynchburg looking to support it, or is that the agreement, the agreement we make from here on going forward?
That's a local question, but I-
So my understanding is that if there are additional sponsors, say if Campbell County were to join, that they would take some share of the deficit based on the governing document for the authority.
And that's the way, when Roanoke Regional Airport was, commission was formed back in 1989 or so, they actually had an initial formula based on actual number of citizens from that county that paid a proportionate amount into the airport authority, and that could be structured in any way, shape, or form. But keep in mind, one of the other things that we've strived for, airport management has strived for, was to apply these surpluses as much as possible towards building a reserve, both a reserve and retained earnings, growing those. So in the event there was any relatively short-term deficit situation, we would be in a position to be able to fund that deficit internally before there was any backstopping that would be necessary. And based on just historical trends, we figure that what we would have now would be several years' worth of funding our own deficit.
What reserves do you have now?
Well, approximately $2 million, depending on how it's structured.
One thing, Councilwoman Wilder, deficit was primarily the debt retirement of the terminal that was built in the mid-'90s. The airport, and Marcus speak better to it, it was pretty much break even the whole time running the airport. But, and obviously, when the airport, new terminal was built in the mid-'90s, it was built for jet service, and jet service was pulled out of Lynchburg and many other smaller markets, and we had the props come in. So that was a lot of, so when it retired the debt from the new terminal being built, then that's when the surpluses start going up.
And then basically, but to understand, the surplus is going forward if there was an authority, those surpluses would go to the authority for the, to use maintenance of the airport and have a surplus.
Capital improvements, but all of the maintenance, operations and maintenance is through our operating fund, and that is paid for through the various rates and charges, the rents, and revenues that we receive from tenants.
Let me try and explain. So there's like two budgets for the airport. There's one for operations and maintenance, and there's one for constructing new facilities. So we're talking today, these numbers, all operations and maintenance. But when you go through the airport as a passenger, you pay a passenger facility charge to the federal government, and they give it back to the airport in the form of a grant that goes for construction. You pay $4.50 every time you come and go to your airport, that goes in the construction fund. The safety valves that can be defined for this are multiple, and principals will have to sit down at the table and decide what's best for this airport, but you can put in place restrictions on debt, you can put in place ratios with respect to revenue, to expenses, and you can put policies in place with respect to how you hold reserves in case there's a problem in the future. So, that kind of comes out of the process later on. But, as Mark said, you know, with the $2 million cash reserve, and when you looked, when you looked at those deficit numbers, it wasn't like you were running millions of dollars in deficits, like you had a bad year of $100,000 deficit. So, the last four years, three years and projected, you're in the green, you've retired your debt for the terminal. So, we would, we would help to make sure, you know, we would, we would give you everything we know to help you define what's best for your airport in terms of those fiscal policies.
And just to clarify, that's approximately, because I don't have it off the top of my head, but also, that includes capital reserves, but it's all unrestricted at this point. So it's not that we couldn't, you know, it's not like we couldn't divert that. That's for future capital matching funds and such that would be available.
This next question, as far as city expenses for the authority, if it went to, went to the authority, would there be additional city expenses? I think we mentioned about the pension or something of that nature, or accounting costs or whatever, would there be additional costs to the city? And if so, would that also be, like contracted out? You mentioned something about contracting, if the authority wanted, the commission wanted to contract with the city, how does that work again?
Sure, so right now, the airport does not have dedicated information technology staff. They use the city's IT department, and they are charged for those services. If the airport becomes an authority, they could, if they wanted to, contract with the city for the IT services, or they could go independent to an outside contractor for IT services.
They would pay the city for those services used. So the city wouldn't be like losing anything, it would still be reimbursed for those, the cost of staff time and things like that.
If that's what they chose to do.
Okay.
In terms of the pension liability, Mark has done some research and has gotten some information that the rate that the airport authority would have for its employees under the Virginia retirement system is less than-
Would be reduced by 10%.
Yeah. So currently, the city's rate is about 18%. The estimate that Mark got for an airport authority of 16 or 18 employees would be 10, would be 8%.
8%. And it was actually 6 and 8%, but I used a higher number.
Are they currently city employees?
They are.
Do they currently?
Absolutely.
So they would convert to-
Authority employees.
Okay. And the, the last piece, the property, I know it's in Campbell County, but it's considered Lynchburg property, please explain it to me, so we can, and going forward, how does that work?
So it's located in Campbell County, but the city, the airport owns it, the city owns it.
So if we, if we switch over, how does it go forward? Do we just lease that property, or is it still portioned by the, owned by the city?
It would be owned by the airport, by the authority.
That's my answer. That's for me. The industry uses a couple of different methods for that, but it's either, you know, a non-revenue lease, a dollar a year, actually, it's not even a dollar a year, the FAA doesn't allow a dollar. So, but it's a lease, it's a, the city would, the city would lease it to the authority, and the authority would operate it. Or they could do a fee simple transfer, the city could deed it to the authority, and the airport authority would hold the deed to the property. They go six to one, half dozen another in these deals. Asheville did a fee simple transfer, Grand Rapids did a lease, Syracuse did a lease, so.
Have you ever seen anyone reverse that, or if we see that wasn't feasible for everyone, is it possible to reverse it, or that once you do it, it's pretty much set?
From, you know, reversing from an authority? I've only seen one example, and it's had some extraordinary circumstances around it, and that's Stewart Airport in Newburgh. It was actually an authority, it was a subsidiary authority to the Metropolitan Airport, Metropolitan Transportation Authority, and the subsidiary was the Metropolitan Airport Authority. The government transferred the airport to the state of New York Department of Transportation under a commission format. The commission went out private sector and did a privatization demonstration program through an act of Congress, literally, and it went into a private contractor hands, and then the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey obtained the airport to put it in its airport reserves, because it now has seven airports that operates in the metropolitan area. That's complicated, and it's been for basically long-range transportation planning purposes. That's the only one I'm aware of.
But in most cases, when they switched over, they found it to be beneficial?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
And just to clarify further, the enabling legislation does have, prior to becoming a participating political subdivision, each political subdivision shall enter into a contract with the authority. So all that will be spelled out for those types of arrangements as well, how it would be done, and that would be one of the subsequent steps in the process.
Yeah. Some states call that a joint powers agreement, it's a contract, but it's an intermunicipal agreement, so there's more than one partner that's brought in through contract as the sponsors of the authority. We use the word sponsors because the federal government calls whoever receives a federal grant a sponsor, so.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. That was a very good overview of the distinctions between the two models.
Okay.
And I thought your report more than adequately illustrated and detailed the substance for it. In general, I think I'm correct in understanding that the authority increases efficiencies and business opportunities, that it would potentially allow increased fees and rates, which could be directed toward airport improvement and the attraction of additional services.
Competitively, yes.
It reduces the oversight and bureaucratic scrutiny and procedures that lengthen the approval time for any decision, which stifles nimble decision-making, which, and that's something that commercial airlines would like to see.
I think most businesses do like to see that.
It would also promote the development possibly of a lucrative commercial airpark, as-
We think that should be a priority goal of the authority.
You say it also is shielded by politics and inefficiencies, and of course, you've talked about the differential between what a government employee is required to make and get for retirement, and what the private authority could pay.
Right.
So, the primary argument is that this authority is the most popular model now used, and other airports do it, so Lynchburg should do it too, because the legacy model is no longer contemporary.
I can't say that it's the most popular model, because that wouldn't be a correct statement. It is most, it is being moved to by more airports than any other model. There's eight, there's 5,500 airports in this country. There's a whole lot of small airports that are city-run airports. They have no commercial service, but they're out there. But all those airports that I listed for you that have moved to an authority model have done so after, you know, lengthy deliberations in deciding whether they wanted to do that.
Okay. So Lynchburg's current model has been characterized by the report as being legacy and outdated. And I think those words were used.
I use those words.
Okay. Has American Airlines expressed any specific objection to Lynchburg's current operating model?
No.
Okay. That's reassuring. Would having an airport authority have prevented Delta from leaving Lynchburg?
That's a good question.
Any indication on that?
I can answer that, because I was on council then, and Mark Courtney and myself, and Rex Hammond, who was the president of the Chamber of Commerce, and Janice Crawford, who's in the room, used to be head of national travel of Framatone and Arriba, and she was on, I think she was chair of the Airport Commission, and we went down to Atlanta after Delta pulled out. And they pulled out a number of cities. Remember, United was here in the early 2000s, before 9/11. So we had three airlines, we're down to one. And Janice can say, and Mark can say that too, that they came with two things, had a $4 million subsidy per year from the city of Lynchburg to keep the service, and they said that we were part of the Roanoke market, we didn't need commercial air service. And that was something that struck me, that struck me since that day.
So, being an authority or not had nothing to do with it?
No, had nothing to do with it. What I've heard is that airlines, they won't get the best possible as far as making money.
But keep in mind, that was also a special situation because of airline consolidation. Delta Airlines acquired, merged with, or acquired Northwest Airlines in 2008, and as part of that, they decided to consolidate and rationalize their route maps, well over the combined, so they started to eliminate overlaps. They had begun serving several, a few years before that, Charlottesville with jet service, regional jet service, and once they decided to rationalize and reduce the number of routes that they were offering out of Atlanta, they looked for any overlaps, and we were considered to be in the middle. So I don't think there was virtually anything that anybody could have done to retain, considering our size market, retain Delta under the circumstances.
So in the context of this conversation, being an authority or not would have had nothing to do with Delta's decision. It was mentioned in the report, there are examples of the lack of nimbleness. The FAA might have a request, the airline, whether it be Delta, American Airlines, or some other, might have a request and expect that there be a prompt nimble decision made on that. on that. Ken, and is there any specific example of how the city's current model prevented or impaired the implementation of an FAA request or an airline request?
Well, as far as airlines are concerned, that would apply more to air service development, and it's what I was referring to earlier in terms of priorities, and it's just a matter of, we're not able to be nimble, because we are not able to prioritize air service development because of the inefficiencies of having to go through a large bureaucracy. We need to operate as a small business, we're operating in an environment that is so far from a small business, and to be able to be nimble, that implies that you have to be able to operate in a environment that all of those companies, or all those potential customers, or rather tenants that you're dealing with, or airlines you're dealing with, are all part of the private sector, all private businesses, and we need to be as nimble as a private business can be in order to be able to react and compete with the other airports that are surrounding us that are airport authorities.
But in the history of our operation as we are, is there any instance where our lack of nimbleness has had any effect one way or the other?
Well, there's so many outside market forces that come into play when it comes to that, but other than that, has, it has been...
So then, Mark, instances with regard to your property holdings, FAA grant receipt, receipts, those...
Again, you know, I, I say it's more from the standpoint of the time it takes to be able to get through the process.
So it's theoretical.
So it does, but you pay a price for having it take so much time to be able to get through the process.
But we haven't been presented with that problem before.
Well, I, we've able to, been able to manage it, to be able to ensure that, but it takes a lot of extra work.
Okay, I understand, and I certainly appreciate your efforts and your staff to be able to be adept in those issues.
I think you understand my point.
Could the city, and I guess I ask this to both staff and you, could the city grant and convey the actual operational portion of the airport property and retain the undeveloped land without conveying it to the authority?
No.
And I need, I need to get my mind around that.
But what you could do is you could put conditions in in which decisions are made over part of the operation versus another part of the operation.
I guess you also need to qualify that, because if you're talking about the land that would possibly be used for the airpark, there is approximately 100 acres of city-owned, airport city-owned land there, that has been for, for 20 years since I came here, has been designated, determined by the FAA as part of the master planning process, to be, to be able to be released. However, the FAA, that could be released back to the city, however, the FAA would require, and I have this in writing from them, it would require that the airport be compensated at fair market value.
That the airport, meaning the authority, or this...
Well, yes, yes, in this case, it would be the authority, obviously, you know.
So the city...
But I mean, even if we released it, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm going to clarify, even if, even if it was, we were still the city department, if we were to release that, the airport would have to be compensated from another city, from the City General Fund, for the fair market value.
That's a complicated, that's a little bit complicated, because your airpark, we don't want to release that land, we want to reserve the revenue generated from that land to help grow your air service at the airport.
I, I do understand that, and certainly, that's, that's the area where the lucrative future revenues may be derived, but there are other interests in the city that may not want to give away a valuable asset, and that's, those are the issues that we, as policymakers, have to assess. In crux, I think the report really implies that responsible and close public oversight, careful budget analysis, close scrutiny of the permitting process, public transparency with open public discussions that protect citizens' interests and taxpayers' pocketbooks, are inconsistent with the effective and efficient operation of the airport under the current model, or under any model.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what that question was, could you repeat?
Well, it suggests that if an airport is run by a locality that scrutinizes and carefully measures its budget, and looks at protocols and procedures, and has control of the permitting props, process, and public discussions of the issues that affect the citizens, that's not a good way to run an airport.
Well, I don't think an authority, you know, gets rid of transparency or public accountability in any, in any means. And in fact, every authority that I've been involved in has written into its construct requirements with respect to transparency and public disclosure, and opens meetings law, and decision-making. What it allows is for streamlining efficiency. It allows for the city and the city council to make appointments of business savvy people to a board that can make business decisions, and that you entrust them to make the right decisions. And that's really what it is.
Well, that, that is key, because we do have a very savvy, capable, skilled airport director, and we made that choice, and he's done an admirable job, as you've pointed out.
He's done such a good job, I'm going to come work on it.
But, but our only oversight is to select them once a year, or whenever their term is up, is, and if there's no other oversight than that, then they are like an oligarchy. They do what they want, based on their own personal and professional insights, without any check or balance or need to account to the city.
Could I just add something?
I mean, that's the way I read this model.
The enabling legislation, though, you have to go back to the enabling legislation, and it's step, first of all, it creates, as the authority, as a, as a political subdivision that was authorized by the General Assembly, and as such, has to meet, and meet all state statutes, all procurement, state law and procurement, and everything dealing with, anything that would be under state, state control, or state, that would be subject as a public body for state control. It has the power of eminent domain, but it, of course, is restricted to what is currently permitted of a public body. It was all geared after that, I mean, you're talking about personnel and everything, would be subject to all state laws, the same as the city of Lynchburg is.
Let me look at your question in a little bit different perspective. If your goal is oversight, and you are happy with the current level of operation of the airport, then I would say the city model is absolutely perfect. If your goal is to grow, and you look down the five years, 10 years down the road, and you want this airport to grow, then the city model is not the best to choose from. So what you have to do is decide upon what is your objective. If you're happy with the way the, the airport is right now, don't change it, but don't expect it to grow either. But if you would like growth, then you need to look at a different governance model.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I don't think there's anybody in this room that one, doesn't want the city, the airport, to grow. But we're at a crossroads, and we need to measure and weigh and critique and be devil's advocates on every issue that's before us, because once we make a decision, I don't think there's any going back. The fact is, that this really suggests that the Lynchburg model is not going and can't be effective in the future. Is there any guarantee that if we have an authority, that there will be another commercial carrier to serve us? I mean, that's the suggestion, that if we take this step, then that's going to be...
No, I think, I think if that were the case, every other airport, every other city or locality that, that has a commercial service airport would convert to an airport authority immediately.
You know, yeah, well, I, I think the fact is, that, that Lynchburg has been very prudent, and very efficient, and very frugal, and for the last three-plus years, profitable in the way in which we have operated the airport, and it's progressing, because we've chosen good people, and smart people, and capable people, and knowledgeable people to direct the airport, and hopefully, that would be the same case with whomever is on the authority, and they'd make those same decisions.
Right. The continuity of the membership of the board is very important, because it's such an educational curve. Bert can talk about going back to Delta in 1910, or 2010. This, this board is subject to cyclical election. An airport authority board tends to stay in place, although it is subject to reappointment, but they get steeped in the aviation business, the lingo, who the business partners are, what those dynamics are, and that feeds into their decision-making, and that's why they make good decisions. And, you know, you don't want a lot of turnover on that board, honestly.
And let me make, can I just make a couple more points? As, as I put in the council report here, that the enabling legislation also specifically states that each locality shall have, also have the power to remove at any time, without cause, any director appointed by it, and appoint a successor. That also means that if the city so chose to have a majority on the board makeup, that can end up being included in the contract, and that, as the board is established. And thirdly, as other airports have done, and a run-up regional airport has done this, did that initially, there's nothing that says that city council can't, can't appoint a city council member, one or more, to actually, certainly initially, serve on the airport authority board, so as to provide an extra layer of accountability.
And I think that's very important, because history has proven that democratic republics tend to survive difficult times. Oligarchies do not, and to have the ability of the taxpayers through city council to be able to pull the strings in if bad things are happening is critically important, when we're talking about an asset and a service as significant to this community as the airport, to every business and to everybody, not just the city, but the region. I, I, I like the concept of an, of an authority, but the question is, what is the compelling reason for us to replace what is a very good, quote, "legacy model," with something that we don't, at this point, know how it's going to work, and so, so that's, that's my concern.
As far as getting a guarantee of another airline service, going to authority, no one can guarantee that, but the report shows you the likelihood of getting one drastically increases. I spoke to Mark Flynn recently, who was head of Department of Aviation.
Department of Aviation.
Of Virginia, and I asked him point blank, and I said, "Mark, if we, if we go to authority," he said, "Bert, you have a tremendous better chance of getting an airline, another airline." So, is it absolute? No. But as far as increase the possibility, yes. And always remember, you used to be a Trailways, and a Greyhound, a lot of cities. One of them went away, and there's only one Greyhound service. If America never pulled out, or decreased their services, because one thing has been said, Mark, that as of last month, I believe, we have the same amount of seats going out of the airport when Delta was here. So we rebounded, and got a number of seats of exact, about the same as when Delta was here, which is a testament to Mark and to the community supporting the airport.
Okay, I've, one, one last thing, if I may, and I've been on the floor maybe more than some people want me to be, but I could be enthusiastic about supporting an authority, because Lynchburg historically has always had a regional perspective. Everything we do, whether our fellow regional partners want us to, has been directed toward what is the best interest of this region. An authority would be consistent with our practices, with our policies, and with what is in our, our heritage. So, I think it's a good thing, and it would fall and mesh with who we are and how we have been, but I want to make sure that the details are ironed out, and ensure that the taxpayers have accountability that they need when we give away an asset like our airport, especially when it's on such good standing. That was my last.
Concerning those details, the articles of incorporation for an authority are written by you. You decide who is on the board. You decide the amount of transparency. You decide the business procedures. You decide how conflicts will be resolved. You agree with other sponsors if they come and choose to join the authority. All those decisions, those articles of incorporation, are decided by this city council, and then the authority has to run by those. So you get to decide the rules of the road, and then the authority will drive down that road in accordance with your rules, and that's how the authority will function.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Mr. Day, Councilmember Hegelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, in looking at this issue, hearing the report actually swayed me even more kind of against the going to the airport authority, because there really isn't, as Councilmember Nelson said, a compelling reason. I mean, right now, we have authority as a governing body, and I, I just, I haven't heard any actually definitive proof that says going to an authority is going to be better. I mean, all we're hearing is, well, it could be better because certain theoretical reasons, which I don't know, i- if a group is answering to one governing body of seven, or a different governing body of seven, one's called a council, one's called a commission, one's called the Board of Supervisors, I, I don't really understand how that's actually just beneficial because the name changes. Secondly, as you pointed out, that our taxpayers have paid $8 million bucks funding this, and we as a council that are elected by the citizens to represent them and to protect their assets, you're asking us to just give away those assets and give away the oversight? Now, if there's a way to sell those assets to some separate group of, to an authority that thinks that they can do it a whole lot better than the, than the bureaucracy now, be open to considering something like that. But when you're looking at the fact of what's historically happened on the airport, and seeing the growth that has happened, you know, you mentioned the Blue Angels coming here, and, and I was there at the dedication of that new tower. That new tower, I think was going to be slated for demolition by the previous president, saying that, hey, this isn't, this is one of them that's, we can't do anything with, because they're such little, it was on the, not necessarily the chopping block, but it was one of those that we're thinking about maybe not continuing. Isn't that correct?
It was part of sequestration in 2013.
Yep, 2013.
They were shut down this tower.
Yep, and so with that, you've got an airport without a tower, you've got nothing. You've got a bunch of land that can't even be farmed. So with that tower, we were very fortunate to the fact that one of our, obviously, American was a great commercial asset, but the other side, as you've mentioned, the other side, the general aviation side that has been booming, and, and having lots of takeoffs and lots of landings, and those things, I think with that, when you look at the volume that was created, it said, you know, it's not going to be one of those that we're going to shutter, but one that we can actually invest in improving. And so that was because of one of our partners has an FAA school, has an aviation school, it's been booming, we have lots of business that is, is growing and using the commercial service, they're using the general aviation side, and, and with that, I think we should be applauding that. You know, over the last couple of years, the commission has made some recommendations, I think, close to unanimous, I'm not sure exactly where it was, and council, almost unanimously, I think, maybe unanimously, said no. And so if we'd have given up and acquiesced that authority to a different body, I think those have been bad decisions that were made. One decision that comes to mind is the fact of trying to take over from a private entity that is fueling airplanes, a private method, and saying, no, we're going to take it over as a government. You're talking about the nimbleness, you're talking about less bureaucracy. This was a recommendation that said, not less bureaucracy, taking away a private entity from fulfilling and fueling planes, to make it complete bureaucratic, to taking it internal. And so with that, this council wisely said, I don't think that's a good idea, because I think that's going to actually probably not be the best thing for general aviation, it's probably not going to be the best thing for the airport as a whole, and everybody, as Councilmember Nelson said, we want growth, so I think that's a fake, a false assumption, that we either want growth, or we stay with this model. I think we can stay with this model of oversight, have, have, and still want growth. So I think it's a false dichotomy, when you say you have one or the other. You know, some of the report, what is being stated is the fact that a new authority would have new energy, but you said there's going to be the same people. You also said, because you had to continue and have that insight... had to continue and have that insight from a historical perspective of aviation. So, if you're saying the current group isn't doing it because it could be better, I mean, I think we could tweak what we're doing now and do it better. I mean, those that are on the Airport Commission obviously can do a whole lot more than what they're doing if, if that is a fallacy, or if that's a problem that is now. If, if the, the current structure of running the, the airport isn't being run efficiently by management, that is something that we have oversight, that can run it more efficiently. And so for us to really say, we're going to give up an asset that we're entrusted by the taxpayers of Lynchburg that have actually paid eight million bucks to just give it up and to give up authority, that's a very tough stretch for me. I, I realize there's, you know, sometimes devil in the details, but we're going through and we're going to be meeting tonight in closed session discussing this very concept that happened a few years ago, where we went to an authority. We went to an authority on a different element, but similar. We went to the, to an authority model that said, hey, let's do solid waste. And with that solid waste, we'll go to an authority because it is going to be better on every facet, lots of ways, I'm sure it is. But we're going to be talking about it now because we're kind of at a Mexican standoff, because there's unintended consequences, and that's what's going to happen. So, as I'm looking at this, I think, and I think there could be lots of benefits. We all want growth, both the city council, both the management, both the Airport Commission. We all want to see our airport grow and succeed. We want to have more opportunities for our, our, our citizens, both in Lynchburg and in the region. We want to have our businesses thrive. I think there's going to be some unintended consequences just like that solid waste authority that we, we thought there were, we thought it was going to be great. And we're running into a little hiccup. And so...
I was going to ask Councilmember, on that, on the point you just made about unintended consequences, that's actually a question that I also, I was curious, could, if you don't mind me asking, what are the unintended consequences that some localities have run into? What are the challenges that they have found after they converted to this model that they didn't expect and, and any downstream effects that were, that were negative?
Honestly, most, most people move to this model because they're trying to get out of unintended consequences that they've experienced. They either run into roadblocks with respect to agreement on a significant capital improvement program, how the airport is managed, separating the airport from the political environment the community rests in. You know, they usually go in this, this manner because they recognize that it is such an important asset to the community. They want it protected. I think it's an unfair characterization to say, we're just giving this airport to somebody else. You're not doing that. And it's been tried to be explained here tonight, which is, this body still appoints the members to the board, sets the rules of engagement, and has the power to redact that at any time that they want to. This airport's run like a business. It's not a solid waste authority. It's no comparison to that. An airport, our businesses, every tenant out there is a private sector business, and government's traditional role is to provide services to the community, not to be in business with business. So, an authority provides the business, the business connectivity. So, I can't really say that I've experienced the downside to this. But, you know...
And so, so with that, if I, if I may, so with that, there are lots of unintended consequences that can happen. And so if there's a compelling reason that says, hey, this is a great thing, we do have that check and balance that you just mentioned, because commission recommended another thing. They said, hey, with the lease that came up midterm, I think we normally have a lease that is a five-year term. The lease came up, the Airport Commission said, don't renew that lease, or only renew it for a year. And city council said, wait a minute, we've got a really good tenant that's been a good customer, that's been running general aviation very well. Is there a compelling reason? We didn't hear it. And so council fortunately was that check and balance and said, no, we don't like that. And so again, acquiescing that authority to unelected groups...
Well, that, that, excuse me, sorry, that's kind of like what we hear all the time that airport tenants don't like, is that they have to go to multiple tables to get their business conducted.
Well, this was very different, though. This was going from, I mean, which is fine. I think we could, I think we can streamline that. Because right now, it goes to the Airport Commission, I mean, just like any rezoning, and then it comes to council. I mean, you recommended lots of things that don't even have to go there. You come to me at the Finance Committee every month with different reports or files or grants, applications. Those things happen per normal government and FAA requirements. It happens mighty quickly. And so I don't understand how it's different if you're going to one group of seven versus a different group of seven. I understand the concept of making us more business friendly. Absolutely. That's what I'd love. The problem is, I think it's gone the opposite.
Well, from an airport man, from an airport management standpoint, Mark and his pretty limited management team have to manage two boards. They have to bring you everything. They have to bring the Airport Commission everything. And it's very limiting on his time to be out there with the airlines or with other businesses, to be honest. So, it's a redundancy. And most businesses that are looking to improve and grow are looking to trim those redundancies and get to their main goal.
And just one last thing. So, a lot of this, as I read, is a lot of theoretical. And, I mean, there's wishes and hopes, and I can appreciate that. It would be nice if there were some certainties, and there would be nice if there weren't other problems. But I've seen some of our really good businesses in Lynchburg that have been, that were running a business and running fueling, and some of that was being, you know, I don't know where it came from. I asked, I called about it the night before, didn't hear really any legitimate reason. And the next day, we get a PowerPoint with, you know, 30 slides that say why it should be done. I'm just, I'm fearful of acquiescing that authority by a governing body that is elected to represent the people. If we have done something bad, I think we can streamline it. But acquiescing that authority, I think is a bad time.
I just want to, I know this, I know you wanted to say something. It's not my floor, but I know that the resolution tonight is to ask the staff to continue to explore. I don't think it's an ultimate decision. I'm sorry.
Right. Thank you. Now, thank you, Councilmember Hegelston, for your points. Mr. Courtney Haldeman, Mr. Commissioner Dotson, but Mr. Dotson.
A couple of things as far as counterpoints. First of all, I just want to say, the study was done through the funding at the airport. It was so taxpayer money that's been alleged in some circles from the city taxpayers that went to determine this study. I think $100,000 was spent on the airpark study four years ago. I don't know that the county, Campbell County, Frank Rogers just walked out, county administrator, did the county put $50,000 up and the city put up $50,000?
Marjette could respond to that. I think it was the Campbell County EDA and the city EDA.
Okay. So, it's $100,000 spent on the airpark, you know, study. There was a real good study, but obviously sits on the shelf. The other thing, and I know the city attorney's here, maybe he can answer better, but I think that the illusion that the $8 million that the city subsidized the airport over a period of years until it started a surplus can be returned somehow to the city. And I think, I think, Mr. Urban, did you check with someone and determine if the money could be turned to the city, either through a commission or through authority?
FAA regulations would not allow future airport revenues to be paid back to the city, to say compensate the city for everything they put into the airport. All airport revenues have to be used for airport purposes. So, if authority was created, the authority could not use airport revenues to say, well, we're paying the city back for all the investment the city made in, you know, for the airport in the past. Now, what you could do is what Ronop did, when they created their airport authority a number of years ago, you could, as one of the proposals, is to say you could have a buy-in, that any other locality who wanted to participate in the authority needed to make a contribution to the city to help reimburse the city for everything it put into the airport. I don't think that's, you know, very common, but that is something that could be, could be done, if that's an issue that Council feels needs to be addressed.
Another, another information, like this commission would convert to an authority. This commission would not convert to authority. You have two people here living in different counties. They, if it's obviously a city of Lynchburg authority, potentially Campbell County, et cetera, new commission members will be done. The other thing is that Asheville, you just said recently went to authority. I fly a lot. Asheville hadn't changed the airport in 15, 20 years. I flew down there a couple of months ago, and they've got brand new construction going on right there. And the biggest thing, Councilmember Hegelston, is that y'all have a tremendous amount of responsibilities, many different issues, well, only one issue, as far as airport. So, when you have an airport authority, it's been mentioned by Mr. Baldwin, their primary focus and only focus is on the airport. We come to y'all with these issues now and in the past, and y'all do the best you can. I served on council 12 years, but I found out so little I knew about the airport. And I was on the Finance Committee for 12 years, and airport manager came to make presentations like you were talking about. I found out so much more than I didn't know until I got on the commission approximately nine years ago. So, to say that, you know, we don't need it because everything's working fine, we can do a whole lot more and prosper a lot more in relation to authority than the present setup. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. I have a question, and I know I'm going to turn, Councilmember Perrow had a thought, and then Councilmember Nelson. Because we've heard from the city perspective, as far as council members' operations, we've heard about the general aviation population. What's the local business, businesses saying about either authority or operating as the same? And I ask that because we have several and many businesses that may have a corporate presence here and then do, you know, business elsewhere or international companies, that sort of thing. So, what, what's the opinion of that population?
Well, of course, all the tenants are invited as a public meeting to attend all the Airport Commission meetings. I know that the President of Freedom Aviation has been attending those. And he has not really expressed officially a position one way or the other. But he was certainly available. He was there, he was there, and he was certain, certainly could have spoken to the issue if he was opposed.
Madam Mayor, somebody from Regional Lights behind us, Chris, I think...
We're strongly supportive of the proposal.
It's Regional Lights. That's Campbell Commerce Region 2000 combination.
I spoke with the President of Freedom Aviation yesterday, and actually, he was very concerned. So...
And that's why, I mean, we, we can singularly point out businesses, but I was just wondering if there was a general collection of, of the business voice from different industries and/or corporations and/or, you know, we have a lot of government entity industries here. And so that's why I was asking, you know, what is the opinion of those? Because I'm a casual vacation, you know, conference-going traveler, but I know there are some people who are very heavily reliant upon that growth model. When you talk about business, and that's what we're switching to, that's what, you know, this potential is, is a more nimble opportunity. I just want to have that perspective.
Do you have a customer right there from the legal firm? Janice Crawford.
That's what I was going to say. I did get a call from Janice today, just wanted to let us know that Pramaton is really in strong support of the authority, where they're...
Devil's in the details, kind of like, I know you didn't like it, but it's a similar concept, is just a different product, is the going from our solid waste authority, or solid waste management to an authority, the devil's kind of in the details, is how do you get there? How do you do it? How do you govern it? And what, how are we paying back our taxpayers for, for funding this? How are we acquiescing authority? Do we have a good plan that is actually going to really look at the business community? Or is there, you know, going to be proposals that we wish we had a backstop, like we did those last two that represented us, that we unanimously voted against? And so, making sure those things are there. That's...
I do agree the devil's in the details. And I know we do have other authorities. And I can point to other examples personally, that, you know, that just authorities that have worked well in their investment and, and the people that have done the work. So, I mean, I, you know, when we look at that, it is in how we draft. I think Mr. Day did say, we are responsible for drafting the language. And so other authorities have been drafted by other councils and/or at other periods of time. So, I understand that point. But that's why we're here today, to decide if we develop the language and how we want to move forward. Councilmember Perrow, Councilmember Nelson.
All right. Thank you. I've put a lot of thought into this. I remember, gee, probably 2008, having lunch with Darryl Laurent, the former, I guess, he was at the time a member of the Airport Commission and the former county administrator of Campbell. And I was talking to him about the Airport Commission and his willingness to be reappointed on. He said, the only reason...
David Laurent.
Who'd I say? Darryl Laurent?
Ahahaha!
I was like, that's very interesting. I didn't know that. Yeah, yeah.
That's okay.
Thank you. David Laurent, thank you. Laurel, whatever, whatever. I could say his name a million times except in front of you all.
That's okay.
A person I admire and respect tremendously. And he said the only reason that he wanted to be, or would be willing to be reappointed, is if, if we continued on an authority discussion. That was my introduction to the discussion as a whole. So, I talked to him at length about that, and the pros and cons of an authority. And from that time, I've been somewhat, without having a lot of facts in front of me, in favor of moving to an authority. The way I see council operating now is very, is very similar to how an authority operates with the additional layer that, that it comes in front of council. We appoint the commission, the commission provides a recommendation, and we, we, as a council, take a really a hands-off approach unless it comes to a lease. When it, and when it does come to a decision being made by council, I find that without, without being, without saying derogatory things to former council members, we are not the most informed people to make, to make these decisions. They are complex decisions. We don't understand all the parameters. And then we tend to take more of a political look at it, probably, than a pure business approach. Yes, we've reversed some decisions from, from the commission. I'm not prepared to get into the details of why we did and what, what decisions were made. They were probably, what we thought at the time, very sound decisions to be made. But we, we're, we're just scratching the surface of the information that was there. I think the risk of going to an authority is minor. I would be absolutely supportive of setting it up in such a way that we appoint the authority members, very similar to what we're doing with the commission right now. I think the statutory, the statutory authority that we have is key, that Mr. Courtney read, that says at any time, membership can be reappointed. We could effectively, council could appoint themselves to the commission at, you know, the next meeting if they didn't like what was going on, and then effectively vote to, I guess, just to break apart the authority and return it to the city if council were, were, wanted to do that. I think that gives an awful lot of control to the city, but it make, but allows the day-to-day decisions to, or those leasing decisions and those policy decisions to be handled by the group of people that we have selected that are not, I mean, look around the table right now. Who do we have? We have experts in their field focusing on the airport. That, that wouldn't change. The faces may change, but the professionalism would not. I'm an engineer. I know about building, buildings. I know about airport construction a little bit, but I don't know anything about airport operations. And to pretend I do, and to, for me to get involved in it, I'll give it my best business look that I could possibly give it, but I still don't understand that level of detail. And I, I feel like one of the things that I believe in is decentralization of authority as best possible. Let's provide the governing structure, the guidance, the guidance. Council would have the ability to talk with the, with the authority commissioners to, to, to hopefully implement what the, what the city would like. If they did not do so, they could be replaced. But at the same time, the, the nimbleness, the ability to make decisions, I, I think the point that you made about a negotiating body to having only one decision-making group that they have to go through, I think that's a key point. I think that's an absolutely key point. I've never been lobbied by Delta or anybody else about, about an airline coming into Lynchburg. And I wouldn't even know what to say to them about it. And why would, why would any airline professional want to deal with me when I don't understand how an airport operates? Lastly, when I talk to business communities, the number... the number-one concern I hear is inability, inability to access other airline markets. Can't get to, can't get to the West, can't get to Atlanta, can't get to, can't get to Dulles. Since I've been on council, when I started on council, we had Atlanta, we had Dulles and, and Charlotte, and Pittsburgh, I believe, or Philadelphia, one of the two. Pittsburgh. And now we've got Charlotte and nothing but Charlotte. As I was telling Mr. Courtney the other day, I tried to get into Lynchburg. I had to come back into town for a funeral on Friday. Two weeks out, there was not a single flight into Lynchburg, which is great for us. I ended up having to fly into Charlottesville and hitching a ride to Northern Virginia.
Seats, right?
Seats. Seats. I couldn't get a, I couldn't get a seat. Yes. Thank you. Nice clarification, just like the Laurent thing. And, you know, it would be nice to have chosen another airline. I, I am, I'm absolutely stuck with American. I'd fly nothing but American because it's, it's what's here. Our pricing model is good, but our businesses need alternatives. They need to be able to access other markets, and is their number-one concern that I hear. For that, because of that, I haven't seen, we may have the same number of seats leaving now that we, that we did back in 2007, 2008, but we certainly don't have the same number of choices. And our city has grown significantly in that timeframe. Our, our region has grown significantly in that timeframe. I think that the, you know, we can choose to the status quo, but I, I'd rather see a change and if we can make improvements to what we, we do. I don't think it's going to get any worse, absolutely, but I think it could get a whole lot better. And the purpose of this, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion. We'll see if it gets a second or not. I've got no idea. But I'd like to move Resolution A with a caveat. I'd like to change the language on Resolution A that references the, the, let me pull it back up again, that references the statutory authority, and I would just, I would like not to reference the specific statute, but just say the enabling legislation from, from the Commonwealth. And, uh, Madam Mayor, I'll make that as a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I would second the motion if Councilmember Perro would entertain a slight change to the resolution. The resolution in, on the third line suggests that in approving this, we are absolutely agreeing to move to an authority. And as has been the sentiment around this table, the devil is in the details. And as Mr. Day said, and it's been reported, how those articles are drafted is going to determine what sort of authority we have and what sort of oversight council has and the taxpayers have. And that's what I want to see. So rather than this resolution, which is almost compulsory, it's mandatory, we're going to move to an authority, I would change the last part of that third line, rather than saying, "City administration to take the necessary steps to form," say, "Take the necessary steps to compile and present a plan by which it could be formed." So we would have to approve that plan.
I, I would accept that as a, well, friendly amendment to a nonseconded.
If you'll do that, I'll second it.
I, I would modify my motion to include that.
I second it if that's true.
All right. Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. And further discussion? Councilmember Perro?
I'm not on.
Councilmember Nelson?
No.
All right. Councilmember Higgleston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, with, with this, there's lots of things that I'm hearing and lots of, you know, assumptions that are being made. And so everybody wants growth. Everybody wants it running more efficiently. And so we're just assuming that because there's a, a model that is thrown out there, that that's going to actually work. I, I've just, I'm very fearful of what I've seen happen with our current, you know, airport group, which our current FBO. And so I'm looking at the growth that we've had there, and so just to making these assumptions, I think is, is a stretch. And so obviously, we all want more growth for our airport, and so just saying, "We'll, we'll change the makeup," I don't really know if that's actually going to change it, because there's, there's been, I've been on council for, I guess, since 2004, a lot of years, fifteen years. And I think there's only been maybe three, four times that the airport has come before council. I mean, so here in the, the concept of streamlining and, and all these kind of things is neat sounding in theory, but the reality of it, I don't know if it's really happened. I mean, it's happened with the FBO on several occasions. It's happened when the, the language was wanting to be changed to not allow a new FBO that bought an old FBO to not be able to continue. Language was changed in that lease. I heard we had another item with the fuel farm. So lots of these things, I, I can understand, and we all like growth. And, but, but just saying the authority is going to be good doesn't make it so. And so I hope that if this resolution does pass and there's a really a bona fide plan that comes forward that says, "Here's really what's going to happen. Here are the steps that we are actually going to take. Here are the new people that will be on the commission. Here's the ability to have stakeholder involvement." You know, I, I think last time we tried to get somebody from one of the stakeholders appointed, didn't happen. But so hopefully there'll be stakeholders that'll be actually appointed to the, the commission, which then goes to an authority if that's the case. I hope that language will be in there. I hope the fact that we'll really look out for our FBO that is really trying to do a good job for their, you know, for the customers, because we've got lots of jets now flying in. Liberty is now an FBS school. They got jets of 140 people that are flying in and out with their, with the, and sitting on the tarmac. And for us to now put fuel tanks in there where they're landing, to me, is kind of, we need a little bit, a little bit better looking into that and not kind of dealing directly or against somebody that won't, won't contract. So I hope it's not an adversarial relationship. I may be wrong. It kind of, it appeared that way. Again, just appearance, and, and I'm sure I took it completely wrong. But with that, I hope that's not the case, and I hope as we draft a plan, we'll look at lots of the different variables. We'll be able to see lots of unintended consequences. I mean, you asked the question, and you didn't have any. I mean, the point is being able to see problems that may happen and then address them ahead of time. So if you don't know of any unintended consequences, there's going to be a lot of them. So, anyway.
Thank you. I don't think anyone has any further conversation, but I know I would like to ask Ms. Allen, because she has had her hand raised. We have a motion on the floor, and I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that she is able to.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, because yes, I, I realize there's the order of business. But I, I just want to make a couple of comments, though. Yeah, the city has done very well, and that is not what this report is saying that it hasn't over the years. And I think the economic impact has been to the region. So I think we need to remember that, yeah, there has been a return on investment, those numbers, and yes, the city has put a lot into it. But there is money that has come back, and it is a regional impact. So we all have benefited from it. And that would be the goal of whoever you or the sponsors, because it may not, you know, maybe there would be other sponsors come in, that would appoint people that they think are the most qualified to do what is in the best interest of the community. The community is businesses, it's citizens, it's the airlines. I mean, we have to work with them. We have currently one airline, and if we can expand service for that one airline, so we have more routes, that's great. Would, would we like to have another one? We hope so, because then we have more options. I sit on this commission, and my background is finance, and I have grown children that live across the country, and I want to fly and them come in, and I want our citizens to have more options. But we need to remember, we have one airline today, and we might have a magnificent flight school today, but it's one, and we don't know what their plans might be 10 to 20 years down the road. They're growing too. They're expanding. They're talking. What if they change their plans? Or what if American? So trying to be reactive when we can, and this is what I would like, if you could just take a moment, and I agree, oversight is extremely important, and that's not what this is about, is to not have any of that. But you made a comment when you did your presentation two meetings ago, and it may be reiterated, the last meeting, when you were talking about how our, we're a non, I won't get the terminology, we're a commercial non-hub airport. And you were talking about trends, and we were doing well, but there are other airport, airports similar that are not. And there's consolidation going. And so I think when we're looking back, what have we done well? That's great. Maybe we can continue that. But environments change, and how are we most ready? And that's why I support this. And I just, I just would like for you to mention that, though, because I think people need to kind of know what trends we're seeing with comparable airports.
You know, so we're working on a mix of airports that are having successes and who are not having their successes. But the trend in the industry with consolidations and mergers is that these airports of your size, under a million passengers a year, are traditionally feeling or, you know, recent, you know, in current times are feeling the pinch because there's such competing services. Every community in this country is competing for that aircraft to add that additional flight in their airport. They're going out and they're meeting with the airlines. They're flying to airline headquarters, and they're making their pitches. And that's what Mark's talking about, needing additional resource so that he can get somebody out to go out and make those pitches. But it's an extremely competitive environment. And the airlines, somebody mentioned it here, airlines are here to make profit. They really, they'll tell you they love Lynchburg. They see an airplane as an asset, and they're trying to figure out how to get the maximum return on that investment. And it could be here, or it could be at Charlottesville, or it could be somewhere else. And what you have to figure out as a community here, as business people in this region, is how to convince the airlines that their best choice for that asset, the best return on investment, is here. So one of the things that happens to me frequently when I go out and talking to people at airports, they want to talk about how their airfares are too high, and they want to knock their airfares down. Well, that's poison to an airline, because they're working off a yield, right? So people that are uninformed, that don't know how to talk to an airline, go out and say, "Hey, your charge is too much. We want our airline, our fares to go down." That's like telling them you want them to reduce their margin. So it is, this is what airport board members learn. They learn when they're talking to airlines, you talk to an airline, and airline speak. When you're talking to a community, you talk to them and community speak. It's very important how you present yourself. These are the challenges you have. All these airports of this size have, so.
And we do have the motion on the floor, and I'm going to ask Mr. Vercheck, is there anything you need from us or anything you need us to know before we take a voice vote?
I would like to read the resolution.
Thank you.
So that it is clear. Be it resolved that the Lynchburg City Council hereby approves the Lynchburg Regional Airport Commission's recommendation to form an independent airport authority as the governing body of Lynchburg Regional Airport and directs the city administration to compile and present a plan to city council to form such an authority as authorized by the enabling legislation.
All right.
That's correct. I think I said, "Take the necessary steps to compile."
Yes.
And compile a plan.
Take the necessary steps.
That's a foregone conclusion.
Compile and present a plan.
Got it.
All right. Thank you. That motion of Vice Mayor Dolan.
I just have a question. The keywords were the enabling legislation. Now, if we don't have any partners, does that cover that, that?
So later on this afternoon, this evening, you're going to be talking about the draft legislative agenda, and it has been proposed that we add something to that to amend the current enabling legislation if there is not another sponsor.
Got it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And anything else you need from us? Or, okay, I will now call for the vote, and it'll be a voice vote. And I will start with Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Perro.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgleston.
No.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Aye.
Aye. So the motion has passed six to one, and city administrators, administration has their task before them. So thank you very much. Thank you to the Airport Commission members for coming and for the diligence and the research that you've done. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for your presentation, and we just look forward to working with you all in the future. And thank you.
Well, no.
Oh. Councilmember Nelson.
It will be the last meeting that Mr. Courtney will attend, if that's the case.
Well, it'll be the last meeting, then, Mr. Courtney and Mr. Dodson, because I leave in December.
Oh. Well, thank you for your service.
It'll be the last meeting. Very, well, actually, I take it back. If you're on the Finance Committee, I'm going to be before the Finance Committee in October.
All right.
But other than that, that may be the last time I'll be before this body or the other body as airport director.
All right. Thank you.
We'll head to the next.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Councilmember Perro just suggested a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back, because we do have a number two on the agenda. So thank you all very much, and thank you for everyone who attended up here. All right. Thank you very much. If we could come back to order, and, yes, Ms. Vercheck. Next is review of information on the impact of emergency custody orders, ECO, temporary detention orders, on the police department, and this was a topic that we asked to be brought back to us. Ms. Vercheck.
This is the, I believe, last topic that emerged from council's discussions on the, and deliberations on the FY 2020 operating budget. This is a huge impact to our law enforcement folks, both in the police department and the sheriff's department. And Chief Zudema is here to share with you some information about what is going on with emergency custody orders and temporary detention orders, not only in our city, but throughout the Commonwealth, and some language that I have incorporated into the draft legislative agenda. So with that, Chief Zudema.
Thank you, Ms. Vercheck. Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, I appreciate you taking the time to listen. This is a very, very complicated issue, to be quite blunt. I'll try and break it down and simplify it as much as I can in the next 10 minutes or so. Please feel free to interrupt me as we go for any questions you may have. Our plan today is to try and walk you through kind of what emergency custody orders are, what temporary detention orders are, as well as their impact on us, both from a manpower issue as well as a fiscal resource, and then give you options for things that we think might be appropriate for the legislative agenda moving forward. So emergency custody orders is a civil process, so it's not a criminal act. Our officers are allowed to take people into physical custody, but that is a civil act. It's nothing criminal involved with that. And those are people we take into custody that involuntarily, when they are exhibiting concerning mental health behavior, they are at risk to themselves or others, and they either unwilling or unable to seek treatment. These emergency custody orders allow us, again, to go out in the community. If there's an order issued through a magistrate, we can serve that, and that could be you as a citizen going down to the magistrate saying, "My mother, my brother, my sister, whoever it may be, is exhibiting these mental health issues." Or it can be an officer observing that on a call for service, and officer is able to take that person into custody without a magistrate actually issuing that order. That emergency custody order allows us to maintain custody of that person in a hospital mental health setting for up to eight hours. That can be extended for another four hours at the request of medical and mental health staff by petitioning the magistrate. Unfortunately, we see oftentimes where those are extended. So when we say that we take custody of that person, that means a police officer is physically with that mental health patient for the entire duration of either that eight or potentially 12 hours. So you could have one of your police officers in your city tied up an entire shift dealing with one patient on one mental health call potentially. And unfortunately, we see that sometimes.
Before you go, can we ask questions on this?
Yes, sir.
So you, you have on there that it's a, the process that allows officers. And so obviously, when you have, you know, four-alarm fire happening in one place and, you know, for not, granted, not fire, but an emergency, so the cops are running there so that they can prioritize and say, "Hey, we don't have to put this one into the queue ahead of time." Does it also, if you're short-staffed, because I, I brought this up because I was on a ride along where we got tied up, and I saw how bad this could be, where our officers are sitting there in the emergency room. So is there an ability for them to say, "Well, we really can't handle this now. We can get them tomorrow" or, or something, or what's the?
Unfortunately, no. You know.
It's, the word says allows. Is it required or is it allowed?
Well, it is lawful for us to do it in circumstances where the officer and/or supervisor that's on that scene makes a determination that that person is a risk to themselves or others, and that by leaving them there, you know, our problem is, is we incur some liability, right? If we show up to your house because someone has called and said you're dealing with mental health issues, and we believe you to be a risk to yourself or others, and we say, "Oh, you know, we're really busy. Sorry, we're just going to leave you there." And then you go on to harm someone, there's some liability incurred there. So that's a judgment called by our officers. Again, if we are dealing with someone who is not combative, who is able and is willing, we're going to get them to where they need to go without having to institute an emergency custody order. Most of the people we take are folks who are unable and unwilling for a variety of different reasons. And so to answer your question very simply, we don't always have that luxury of being able to do that. we don't always have that luxury of being able to do that and no matter how busy we are. So once they are at a mental health facility, or in our case, they're usually taken locally here to Centra Health at Lynchburg General, where Horizon partners and has staff that comes in there and assesses folks in the emergency room. They make a decision in conjunction with the medical staff there, the mental health professionals do, whether this person is good to be released, meaning there's no more need to involuntarily hold them, or whether they need to seek a temporary detention order or a TDO. That, again, is another civil process. If that order is issued, it allows that person to be held against their will involuntarily for up to 72 hours. When that TDO is issued, that usually requires the transport of that person to some type of mental health facility. It could be locally here, but unfortunately, the majority of times it's not. It is somewhere in the state. And when I say in the state, it can literally be anywhere from Virginia Beach to Northern Virginia to far, far southwest. So our officers are required, under that temporary detention order, by state law, we are mandated to transport that person to that location that's named on that temporary detention order. Our policy is that we have two officers with every transport like that. We do that because it's a safety concern, first and foremost, for the patient. And secondly, as importantly, it's for our officers. You know, we've had situations where there have been accusations that things have taken place during this transport. And we want to make sure, obviously, for safety reasons, we have two officers there. So those, again, can go all over the state and we literally take them all over the state. There was not, too long ago, a night where we transported, I want to say, four TDO patients in one evening. That's eight officers we tied up in an evening. We don't have the resources to do that with on-duty staff. So what we're doing most times is we are calling people in who are off and paying them overtime to do that. So when we talk about local impact, these are really, truly public health issues. And I don't say any of that to say that we don't have a role as law enforcement in dealing with mental health. We absolutely do. My opinion, as a humble chief of police here in Lynchburg, not mandating state law, is that our role is to go in and stabilize that situation, get that person from whatever crisis they are dealing with to someone who can treat them, from either a medical and/or a mental health situation. What compounds a lot of these issues is a lot of the folks that we run into that are dealing with mental health challenges are also dealing with substance abuse issues, right? So trying to figure that all out is very, very challenging and difficult. As I mentioned, state law requires that local law enforcement right now serves ECOs and TDOs. I'll talk about another option in just a minute that the state is piloting throughout the Commonwealth. But basically, what this amounts to, and I'm preaching to the choir, trust me when I say this, I know that. This is absolutely an unfunded mandate. And you're going to see some pretty staggering numbers here in a minute on how that impacts us here in Lynchburg. So this is a look at ECOs, okay, from 2015 to present. And when you look at that, your first column there, total ECOs, that's just a raw number of individuals that have been under an ECO. That total 12-hour shift columns, we took the total number of hours through our CAD system that are applied to those 534, let's say, in 2015. And we divided that total number of hours by 12 because our officers, our patrol officers, work a 12-hour shift. So we have spent 307 full shifts, okay, in 2015 dealing with ECOs. Now, put that in some context. Our officers on 12-hour shifts work about 15 days a month, okay, which equates to about 180 days a year working 12-hour shifts, okay? So as you start looking at these numbers in that total 12-hour shift category, right, one officer working full-time, never taking a vacation, never taking a day off, never having a training day, right, is 180 shifts. So as you start to look down at 2018, for example, we're well over two, approaching three full-time officers, never taking a day off, handling just ECOs. And you can see the cost to us. That cost is based, as you can see on the bottom there, on an average hourly rate of $21.50 an hour, which is an average rate of all of our police officers, non-supervisory police officers, that does not calculate overtime.
It's not, it's also not a fully loaded cost. And there are no benefits associated with that.
Absolutely.
It's probably double that.
Is absolutely, and you're looking at roughly 30% for benefits, right? You're looking at vehicle costs, you're looking at fuel costs, you're looking at all these other things. And I'll be honest with you, we didn't calculate for this because the amount of labor it takes my staff to put into doing that. If that's something down the road you want to do, we could certainly look at.
Well, I think it could be double. Yeah. All right. So maybe not double, but a third or better, more than that. So the cost is significant. Your point's valid, absolutely valid.
Very significant. And so as you look at ECOs from that period of 2015 to 19, we're projecting out, obviously, because we're not at a full year. This data for 19 is through the month of August. We're looking at a 36% increase in ECOs over a four-and-a-half-year, almost five-year period, which is pretty staggering. When you start to extrapolate out those numbers, and again, when you look at this, you would think the more ECOs, right, the higher the number. But that doesn't always play out because some ECOs we might handle in two hours, right? Pretty rare, but some we might. Others may be eight or 12. So it's just, it's really very case-specific on each of those incidents on how that goes. But you can see, if you project it out, even at the current rate and number of hours for this current year, you're looking at about $135,000 in just ECOs for 2019, if you extrapolate that out, ballpark numbers. Really, really significant.
Councilmember Hegelsohn.
If you can, I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with the ECOs, but if you can kind of, maybe just kind of walk through what a normal thing is.
Yeah, sure. So most often, our officers get dispatched call for service for a person's check to a location here in the city. Our policy, because of how volatile some of those situations are, is we send two officers and a supervisor to every one of those calls. We want to make sure we have all the tools there. Sometimes these folks are exhibiting not only mental health issues, but there are some other anxiety-related issues and things that cause them to act out violently. So we want to make sure we have all the tools there and the manpower there to hopefully peacefully take them into custody. So once that person is in custody, that person will be transported as long as they're not combative by one officer. If they're continuing to be combative, two officers will transport. We'll take them over to Lynchburg General. We will sit there and wait a unreasonable amount of time, in my opinion. And I'm not throwing stones at Centra. I'm not throwing stones at Horizon. It is what it is. Their systems are taxed, just like our systems are taxed. So they will wait there for sometimes hours on end to make sure that the person is seen by a mental health professional. But before that person can be TDO'd and sent somewhere, they also have to be cleared medically, all right, to be able to say, it's safe to transport this person medically from here to Catawba or from here to, you know, Norfolk or anywhere else in between, right? So once that happens, the entire time, the officer is physically there with that patient, dealing with them and making sure they stay secured in the hospital. From that time, if a TDO is issued, then we will make every effort to serve that as quickly as we can. Our interpretation through the assistance of the city attorney is that we technically have 24 hours to take that person from the time a TDO is issued and get them en route to the location they're going to. We will then, in most of those situations, again, we will call in officers who are off-duty, pay them overtime to come transport. Two of them will come in, they'll have to get a vehicle. They'll get the vehicle over to the hospital. They'll get this person, all their medical records, their belongings. They'll physically transport them from Lynchburg to wherever they're going to, get them, transfer the custody to that mental health facility, and then drive back, obviously.
Can you say 24 hours?
En route?
Correct.
So it doesn't have to be in place in 24 hours. They just need to be wheels up inside 24 hours.
That person needs to be in our car, traveling out of Lynchburg, within 24 hours.
It helps anyway.
It does help some. And I will tell you that our interpretation of that 24-hour period is very different than the hospital's interpretation of that. But that's where we're at right now and that's what we do. We do get assistance, as the city manager mentioned, from the sheriff's office in terms of when they have staffing available to help transport that. And talking to the sheriff earlier this week, in addition to the numbers you see here, these are just Lynchburg PD numbers. Right, right. We'll get to the TDOs, which is, makes ECOs look like a cakewalk, quite honestly. The sheriff says he's taken about 100 TDOs over the last calendar year. So it's a challenging situation. So speaking.
With the ECO, back before you finish on that, what could happen is they sit there with the patient in the hospital, waiting there for the doctor, whoever the medical person is, or psychiatrist. They come in and give them medicine. So they wait five hours or two hours or eight hours. Then they come in, then the officer finally can go. So it's kind of just saying, you're sitting there, one officer, looking after one person, which there's got to be some kind of, maybe we could have a TDO authority if the way that he presented the authority being lack of government bureaucracy. I mean, this seems, you got one officer sitting there for one person for maybe eight hours, and then the person may come from Horizon or the psychiatrist or whatever and says, oh, here's a prescription and you're fine and go.
I was about to, just my question, because looking at these numbers, the next slide is not any better with the TDOs. Much worse. We have partners. I mean, Centra is our medical provider. Horizon is our mental health partner. So like, Horizon is spending funds too. So, I mean, when you look at the numbers, we could almost have our own medical team available for this process. I mean, I, you know, not knowing what, I'm just throwing something out there. It might be completely ludicrous, but I'm just saying, saving the time. And because the partners are spending some money, and I'm just wondering, is there any conversation like that of how to?
See, I think one problem that I just kind of ascertain economically is one side is spending the money. So we're spending the money for the police officers to come there.
Right.
Horizon, actually, they bill insurance, they bill Medicaid. They get compensated for more of these things. I'm not sure what that compensation level is. And so if they get paid to do it, that's actually an incentive to do more of them. I mean, what you, what you get, you know, get paid for is what you, what you.
But I'm not really, I'm not willing to kind of allude that our mental health providers are trying to capitalize off of.
But you're saying they're more spending money.
Mental health crisis. And so, yeah. And so I'm just saying, with the amount of money, is there a better operation model that, I know you, if we let you get you through your presentation, you do suggest that there's a model being created. But I'm just, when I looked ahead at the slide, I'm like, wow, we could almost afford our office staff, you know.
And the TDO is actually certified. The ECO is kind of a little more of a hypothesis, right?
I think that's relatively fair to say, yeah. I mean, you can go down as an average citizen and walk into the magistrate's office, present a reasonable amount of factual information, raise your right hand and swear you're telling the truth, and an ECO can be granted. A TDO has to be called in by medical staff. A citizen cannot obtain a TDO. It has to be clinical staff that has evaluated the patient in a setting that has made a determination they need additional assistance. To answer your previous question, Madam Mayor, I don't know that there's a model, per se, that's exactly like that. I'm not saying there isn't, there hasn't been one, to my knowledge, discussed here. One thing we've partnered, we partner with Horizon and Centra on a lot of different things. So I don't want you to think I'm throwing them into the bus in any of this. Again, their systems are taxed like ours are as well. We have partnered with Horizon over several years on a CIT program. We train a lot of our officers to better recognize and deal with mental health. And then part of that also is they have been able, with our support, to get a grant to fund an officer. There's a police officer or sheriff's deputy. We partner with the regional sheriff's departments here, sitting in the emergency room 24 hours a day to deal with mental health patients. And that's a grant fund that that officer, so if I took one of you into custody on an ECO tonight and I went over to the hospital, and I took you over to the hospital, as long as that officer doesn't already have a patient that he or she is sitting with, I could turn over custody of you to that officer so I could get back out on the street and serve our citizens like we want to. But the challenge is, it's a one-on-one thing. So to Councilman Hegelsohn's point, as soon as the second one comes in, that officer's sitting there with him, with he or she. So we'll continue to explore options there. And Horizon is a real good partner of ours that we continue to work with on.
And my question was just in partnership with, because I know we are partners with everyone.
Absolutely.
It's just, you know, thinking out of the box.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Nelson, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, as you probably recall, I was a special justice for 28 years. I probably wrote over 4,000 TDOs, heard as many hearings and made commitments on that. The model in those, when I last held a commitment hearing was, if I'd get called at 2:00 in the morning and somebody wanted a TDO, I would evaluate, is there a mental basis for this conduct? Are they dangerous to themselves or others? Are substantially unable to care for themselves? And then I would issue it. Police officer would come by my house, pick it up, and then go to the scene and pick the individual up. But once that individual was delivered to the hospital, they could relinquish custody to the hospital staff and the security at the hospitals. There was no need for a police officer to retain there unless and until there was need for transport when the commitment hearing was held and the commitment was made to Catawba, Central State or Western State. It seems that we got away, for reasons that must be legitimate, the legislature said, no, we want a sworn police officer there and not a private security guard, providing security to the nurses and staff who are having to deal with these people. And somewhere that changed. I think it would be prudent for the legislature to look at going back to some compromise so that private security could be deputized to deal with those issues and not have personnel with all the resources that we have in our police force having to do what is a very specialized thing. Is there discussion that's been had on that? Is, is there discussion that's been had on that?
So, a couple of things I'll address there. So, we still partner with Centra to a degree where they, again, an officer takes a, a patient and they're under an ECO. That patient is TDOed. When they have staffing available, which again is a challenge for them because they're, they're thin too, those security officers that they have there that have been designated as special conservators of the peace, meaning that they have power to arrest and, and things along those lines, they, when available, will temporarily take custody of those patients for us, at least until we, in that 24-hour window, can get an officer back over there to take them away, uh, to Catawba or wherever they're going. So, that's one thing that we partner with. Their challenge though, again, a lot of times what we run into is they don't have the staff available to do that. So, our staff does that. The other thing that we're looking at, we'll get to in just a minute here, is the state has a pilot program that is allowing a private security company to transport patients, um, on TDOs so that we don't have to. There's some challenges there, um, that I'll talk about in just a minute. But, um, in terms of day-to-day, uh, as we sit right here tonight, um, majority of them are officers we're sitting with unfortunately. So, and I don't disagree with exactly what you're saying. And I think the pilot program is going where you're suggesting it goes. Uh, it's, there's just some limitations to that that we'll talk about in just a minute.
Consistent with the mayor's suggestion, if, it might be prudent and a lot cheaper if we partnered with the city, worked a program with Centra to enable them to have the personnel so that your personnel can leave immediately and go back on the street.
We've actually, I'm sorry to interrupt you, we've actually offered Centra, um, the opportunity. It would be cheaper for us to pay a security officer their overtime rate than it would be to pay one of our officers our overtime rate.
Absolutely.
And we've actually offered that out and had some very initial discussions on that. Um, it's not a solution. All the stuff I'm talking to you about quite bluntly is a Band-Aid on an arterial bleed. This system needs a significant, significant overhaul. Um, and that's not to point the finger at anybody. That's just to say, the way we are doing business collectively as a commonwealth, when it comes to mental health, I think needs significant change. And that obviously has to happen at state legislature to be impactful.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. So, I'm going to move on to TDOs unless there's any other questions on that. Whoops, sorry, already bumped it. My able assistant over here was ahead of me, um, as always. Uh, so, uh, as we talk about TDOs, this is where to me it, it really starts to stand out. When you look at some of the numbers that you see in front of you there, we are projecting from a five-year period, a 345% increase. That is not a typo, a 345% increase. We saw, as you can see in, in 19, the first eight months of 19, we saw 235 TDOs. And that's just Lynchburg dealing with those. The numbers are staggering. Your question is probably what's causing that? I wish I knew. I really did. I would be touring the country, probably consulting on it if I knew. I think part of it is probably an awareness piece. I think collectively, our community is doing a much better job of making people aware of mental health issues. I think part of it is, uh, the training and recognition that our folks have gotten through the CIT program to recognize a, a, somebody that maybe before was on the fence. They would have thought, eh, I don't know if we really need to take this person or that person under an ECO. They're recognizing because of the training they're receiving, hey, yes, this person definitely is in, in mental health crisis. We need to get them some assistance. So, you can see the numbers there, again, base hourly rate that doesn't take into account any benefits, any other, uh, ancillary costs related to that. Um, we're looking at 70,000 in the first eight months. Uh, and when you start to carry those numbers out, between ECOs and TDOs, just a super conservative estimate of salary only, not all those other things, you're probably spending 300 to 350,000 dollars, uh, this current fiscal year, or calendar year, I'm sorry, uh, dealing with mental health-related stuff. That's a significant amount of money. Uh, and again, that does not include 30% in benefits and fuel costs and, and all the other ancillary things. So, um, these numbers, I will tell you from my experience, I did not see these going down anytime soon. I don't think that 2019 is going to be an anomaly. I think you're going to see that trend continue upward. Again, there's just so many challenges with, with folks, uh, and a lot of these are tied from mental health with substance abuse, which make them very difficult to deal with. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, they, I would, and I don't have any hard data to tell you what percentage. But anecdotally, I would say, uh, after doing this job for 20-plus years, easily over 50% of mental health patients probably have some type of substance abuse issue as well that they're, they're dealing with. So, the challenge there then becomes, you know, you're addressing a mental health issue, you're addressing a substance abuse issue. And in some cases, you're also addressing a medical issue at the same time. And those are some of our more challenging patients to deal with, as you can imagine.
And just a question, because we're, we've had growth as a, just as a city overall, and we talk about the numbers keeping up with growth. Do you think the numbers, uh, parallel or because we're growing as a city, are we seeing more of these issues? You know, just because of the nature of growth?
I, I think, you know, mental health does not discriminate, um, at all amongst, regardless of race, class, socioeconomic status, or anything in between. Um, so I would say, again, anecdotally, as our population increases, absolutely, our mental health is going to continue to increase without a doubt. Um, and, you know, we, we see numbers that I just, when I look at the number that's in front of you, that 235, it, I mean, it's staggering to me. Um, it, it is truly a crisis. And, you know, this is on top of what you've heard me preach to all of you for the last year, which is we still continue to struggle with recruitment, with retention, and with having enough officers, right? Um, and this is significantly taxing. I mean, you start to look at the number of 12-hour shifts there, again, 270 for the first eight months, right? Uh, that, that's pretty significant. That's going to be easily two officers a year, um, by the end of this calendar year that will be doing nothing but that type of stuff. So, it's, it's very challenging.
And it's got to be challenging on morale too. I mean, when somebody's sitting there who's a sworn police officer that is ready to go out there and, you know, arrest bad guys, they're sitting there in the hospital waiting for the, you know, the nurse to come by. I mean.
It, it is. It's, it's something that, you know, officers, uh, when they sign up for the certain thing, wow, you know, if I have a really great day, I'll go get to sit at the hospital for, you know, eight or 10 hours, not certainly what do. It's certainly a necessary, um, service we provide. The challenge is, is while we're tied up dealing with a lot of these folks, there's continued demands that are coming in 24 hours a day. Uh, and we're having to prioritize those demands, back to your previous question. Um, and some of the things that we would like to get to, we don't get to as quickly as we could or should because our staff is tied up dealing with, with mental health patients. So, that's definitely challenging. Uh, I'll give you a little bit of context. Uh, as you look at the numbers you see there, um, obviously we've redacted, uh, personal information. But these are 10 different patients that we've dealt with, and this is, uh, since 2010. We, our, our number one person in, in the last nine years has been ECOed 29 times. Okay? If, if you take nothing else away from this information, that to me screams, there's something in the mental health system that needs to be corrected. Okay? Now, I'm not here to say I'm a clinician or I'm a mental health professional, but we have got to look at how we treat this a little more holistically, um, than what we're doing. If someone is continuing, continuing through the system, we need to do something different. That's a person that has some type of mental health need that 29 times has, has come into our contact. Um, you know, patient number nine is, is a very interesting one. This is a gentleman that, uh, most officers, if you mentioned his name in a room of officers, they would immediately know who this person is. Um, this person, over the last, uh, both these incidents that I'm going to tell you about happened, uh, within the last year, year and a half. Uh, he barricaded himself, he was having mental health crisis, said that he was going to kill himself, kill anybody that came to help him, including police officers. So, he barricaded himself inside his residence. Uh, when we get something like that, that is a, what we would call a critical incident. So, we call out our crisis negotiations team, we call out our tactical team, we call out those folks who have the training and the tools to safely handle that incident and to de-escalate it to where we can get that person to safety first and foremost, and get treatment that they need. That is probably, in that response, conservatively, 20 to 25 officers that are tied up on that for hours on end. In one situation, I think the first time, it was about a six or seven-hour barricade where we had all those people and all those resources tied up there. Okay? So, he gets ultimately ECOed, he gets TDOed, he gets released, uh, within about 48, 72 hours, and barricades himself again two days later. Our officers go over there again with a significant amount of resources, and we don't have an option there. You know, I've, I've heard people say, why can't you just go kick the door and then take him out of there? Well, you know, back in the 60s and 70s, that was probably a great approach to policing, okay? Uh, but that's not in today's day and age. First and foremost, my men and women are going to be safe when they're dealing with people that are in mental health crisis, no matter what. And if that means we spend two hours, four hours, or 24 hours sitting on somebody on a house to make sure that everybody is safe, that's what we're going to do. Secondly, we spend that time and that effort because we want to make sure the patient is safe too. There's a lot of things that we can do to force the situation to create that jeopardy that may not otherwise be there if we were to slow down and take our time. Um, so, these are very time-consuming, very resource-consuming, and very fiscally-consuming, um, events when we deal with mental health patients. So, kind of wrapping up here and I'll get you guys out of here. There are really no quick or easy solutions. I, I think you know that. Um, this is not unique to Lynchburg. This is going on, when I talk to my colleagues who are chiefs and sheriffs all over the state, this is something that everybody is struggling with right now. Our Chiefs Association of Virginia is working with General Assembly on a regular basis, trying to address these issues and, and push forward what our concerns are. There is an alternative transportation pilot, uh, Councilman Nelson, what you were asking about, um, that is, the state has signed a contract with G4S Security Company. They do a lot of different types of security all over the country and the world. Um, and they are providing transportation services. They started the pilot in Southwest Virginia. It, we have a meeting December 4th. Uh, they'll be bringing it here in, uh, early 2020. They will basically provide security officers who are unarmed, who provide, uh, vehicles that have a, a transport, um, container and then for lack of better terms, basically a, a, a cage between the front and the back, just like a police car does. Um, and they will transport them, um, not secured and, and not handcuffed, and from Lynchburg to wherever. With this caveat, or caveats, they cannot be combative, they cannot have any medical issues, and they cannot be a juvenile. The estimates from Southwest Virginia, and I don't know how exactly that will relate to, to Central Virginia, because I don't know what their clientele is they deal with there quite bluntly, is they will handle about 40% of the TDO transports for that area. We'll have to see what that looks like here. I hope it's way higher. Um, being somewhat, uh, reasonable, it's probably going to be closer, maybe a little bit lower. A lot of the folks we deal with are combative. They do have medical issues, or in many cases, they are juveniles. And this company will not handle any of those. Um, so, this is a pilot. We're going to be the second region to get this pilot, again, early 2020. We'll see how it goes. It's better than nothing. I'll be quite honest with you. Um, and if it can take some of the workload off our men and women so they can stay here and your police officers can be in your city handling calls for service and, and demands, then that's what we want to have happen. Legislative agenda. We absolutely long-term support and overhaul the mental health system as it pertains to law enforcement mandates. The majority of what I'm telling you we do, we do because the state law says we have to do it. I'm not saying we wouldn't still try and make sure that folks are safe, we wouldn't still be involved. Again, we have a role in mental health crisis, no question about that. My opinion is that role is getting them from crisis, getting them somewhere where medically and they can be treated as well as treated from a mental health perspective. After that, I would like to see something else like this pilot become a full-time thing where we get them safe to the hospital and then we move on. In the, in the interim though, we really need some funding for reimbursement, as you can see, of TDO. Uh, the state legislature, many, many years ago, uh, passed legislation that says localities can receive reimbursement for TDO funding. They just missed one little piece. They didn't put any funding in place for it when they did that, right? So, it's great to say you can do it. It's another thing to actually fund it. Um, and then another short-term, uh, issue to address that is we need more local beds here. Uh, the, again, anecdotally, the majority of our TDOs that we take, we take out of town. Uh, there's a limited number of mental health beds here. Uh, as you all know, the, the medical systems everywhere in this country are taxed for beds regardless, but mental health beds are at a premium as well. So, um, that would help us short-term from having to transport and, and use those resources to go out of town. So, um, these are just a few of the, the great young men and women that, uh, are your police officers that you depend on each and every day to be out here doing all these things and, and keeping all these safe. I'd be more than happy to answer any other questions, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any, uh, Councilmember Hegelson?
Just maybe two comments. One, I'm wondering if there's, you know, when a patient, regard, however they're funded, you know, so a patient goes to the hospital, there's typically, the hospital gets some kind of insurance funding, um, or Medicaid or medic, you know, whatever it is. If there's an ability for them to compensate when they're, don't have somebody there, you know, when, when your guys have got to sit there basically doing their job, because you're really supposed to hand them off to them. And if they don't have somebody there, if there's a way that they could pay for it. Secondly, if there's a way to say, i- if that doesn't work, the ability, either our police officers, our sworn officers, our deputy sheriffs, we're typically kind of, uh, the, 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 the lower paid, uh, because they're not law enforcement. They're deputy sheriffs. And so, with that, if there's a way to at least somehow figure out a transfer there, if it's not with the, the folks, the security folks at Centra, if it's our deputy sheriffs, where our police officers can take their $40,000 car with all the equipment and get back on the street, and to have somebody who's a part-time deputy, um, that can be there, is that a possibility? If we figure out a wholesale strategy that says, hey, we can at least have more deputies that you can pass the baton to if Centra doesn't have somebody there?
Yeah, I mean, we're honestly open to any and all options, um, that will help, uh.
That, because they're, they're typically paid a whole lot less, I mean, because they don't have the training and that's, I guess that was the intent. I mean, it's kind of like going from a lawyer to a paralegal. You have, uh, somebody that you can pay a little bit less because they don't have necessarily the equipment or the training that our sworn officers do.
Yeah, so, just for clarification, the city, our, our deputy sheriffs, our sworn law enforcement, they have all the arrest powers and everything else that our officers do. Um, now, whether they have been through, uh, the full police academy or whether the sheriff chooses to send them through an abbreviated version for like a jail or school, um, that's obviously up to the sheriff. Uh, and they help us whenever they can, but, you know, they, they have limited resources. Uh, we do have the partnership in the CIT program at, uh, the hospital where, uh, the, the surrounding jurisdictions provide deputies. We basically break, uh, the month up into weeks. We'll take a week, and then Amherst, Bedford-Campbell, each take a week, uh, where they staff that, uh, 24/7 for that week. And, uh, you know, that, that helps. But again, just as you see the volume, that, that one person is taking one patient, quite honestly, and we're seeing way more than a patient a day. You know, and this call for, type of call for service is single-handedly the most taxing call for service on our officers on a day-to-day shift. Um, you know, Sergeant Burgess is in the back there. He's one of our patrol sergeants. And, uh, he could tell you that, probably, I won't speak for him, but one of his biggest challenges is he has a finite number of resources on a shift, okay? And he's got to try and figure out, okay, I know I have to take that ECO. I know we have to. How do I manage all these other calls? And they are routinely having at all hours of the day and night, send out text messages and emails to folks saying, hey, we need two officers to come in. It's 2:00 in the morning. We need you to come in and take somebody to, to Roanoke or to Norfolk or to Stanton or wherever it may be. So, it's, it is a challenge. And, uh, you know, we're going to keep doing everything we can to provide the services we can, but it's taxing. And it's, uh, uh, it certainly impacts morale. It certainly impacts a, a lot of other things. And with our already challenges, the challenges we already have rather in, in recruitment, retention, and, and number of officers, it just compounds that when we deal with things like this.
Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. Um, if we have so many, would it be economically advantaged, advantaged, an advantage to have certain officers that might not be street officers, but a, um, different officer just to handle those type cases? Or a special group that just handles those cases that wouldn't be at the same level of a police officer? Or everybody had to go to the same background as a police officer?
So, one of the things we've discussed, um, and not at any length yet, but is, you know, do we try and hire what I would call a part-time or a reserve police officer, right, to do things just like this? The only challenge that we have is anybody I put in a uniform has got to have all the training. We can't just give them kind of some of the training, like, okay, we're going to give you a gun and nothing else. Uh, I'm not going to give you a pepper spray. I'm not going to give you a taser. I'm not going to give you a baton. I'm not going to give you all these things. So, they would still need the same level of training. But one opportunity that may be there is, is to look at our retirees, quite honestly. You know, a lot of our retirees, very few of our officers retire and just sit back and don't do anything, uh, right? They, they do something part-time. And if we could hire some of them back part-time, right, at, at a reasonable hourly rate that makes it appealing for them to want to get up at 2:00 in the morning to go drive somebody to Norfolk, right? That might be an opportunity. Um, obviously, there's going to need to be some funding that goes along with that. I, quite honestly, if I could have supported that in my current budget, I would have done it a long time ago. Uh, so, there's certainly funding that we would need to make that happen. But that's, that's an option as well, certainly.
If, if the person's from a surrounding county, would they have to bear some of that cost? Or is it because it's, it's located in Lynchburg, we have to bear that cost?
So, so the way that the law is written in terms of TDO transports is the residents where the patient is from is required to transport on a TDO unless that person is more than, is it 50 miles, Titus? I think it's 50 miles away. So, if you come here from Richmond, right, you're a resident of Richmond, but you happen to be in Lynchburg and you end up getting ECOed and then TDOed, we would have to take care of you. But if you come here from Bedford or somewhere within that 50 miles, um, in your TDO, then the sheriff's office for that locality is called, uh, to take that person and transport him. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
What about the need for additional vehicles? Obviously, to get the patient from point A to point B, you can't walk them. You got to drive them.
Absolutely. There would, there would be additional needs for vehicles and some other ancillary equipment, nothing. The vehicle would be the biggest cost, absolutely. And, uh, a fully equipped vehicle with all the stuff we put in it is about $50,000, give or take. About 30 and some change for the car and then all the other gadgets and gear that go along with it. And a lot of that is, is liability-related stuff, like all of our cars now have two cameras and then one forward facing out the front windshield, one rear facing to the, the transport area so that if we have an ECO or a TDO in there, um, we can have that recorded. So, if there's any allegation that the officers were doing anything inappropriate, then it would all be recorded on camera.
Because the whole need to have a sworn police officer in a secure vehicle is to protect not only the patient, but the public.
Absolutely.
Who is going to be all along that route. As long as they're in the hospital, everybody who's there knows what's going on and knows they're secure. Once you take them out, uh, the level of expertise needs to be higher.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
I think we're done with your presentation.
Uh, all done. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Um, I just know, I would be interested, because we will soon be having a budget con, retreat conversation coming up in the near future, um, looking a little bit deeper into the numbers and, and just seeing, you know, the, the suggestion. Councilmember Wilder and maybe Nelson, others have talked about, um, retirees, you know, what, what does that look like financially? What's the, the cost savings or the benefit of that when we look at benefits and all of that? So, if that's something that could be brought back, um, during our budget discussion, I think it would be good.
Okay.
Or, or other suggestions we had, but I think that's pretty obvious. You have your numbers and, and you could look at that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. All right.
I think the state needs to look at some funding.
Oh, that's going to be in the legislative agenda.
Right, in the agenda. Mm-hmm.
I mean, it needs to be pushed.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion or questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief Zudama.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Um, next is roll call, and I will turn to Councilmember Wright. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Perro.
Uh, I took care of it. PDC, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Hegelson.
Councilmember Nelson?
I just want to say I had a splendid opportunity today, along with Vice Mayor and Mayor, to attend an event at Perrymont Elementary School celebrating, uh, the farm-to-school program, which essentially is a state program emphasizing the need to use local farms and produce and products to, uh, feed the children in our schools. And, uh, not only did the Secretary and Assistant Secretary of Agriculture and Forestry drive and attend, but along with, uh, distinguished representatives from the Dairy Association and the, uh, Department of Education were all there, along with others. And it, uh, they made some good points about how buying local products not only improved the local economy, but also by having fresh food and nutritious food, it improves the health of the children. And it reduces, uh, it promotes conservation because the large national conglomerates that produce and package and manufacture food and ship it, uh, can be avoided. You have fresh produce and otherwise that is, is locally produced and it's coming in unpackaged and relatively ready to go. It was a great event, and I understand everybody from the state was very impressed with, uh, with Lynchburg and what we do.
Thank you.
Were they able to have raw milk?
They did.
They had raw milk?
Not raw. It was, it was.
They would make that illegal for some reason.
The focus was Homestead Creamery, which is down in, uh, Franklin County, and their representatives were there. And the, the kids, uh, that school is one of the, only two in the state that are designated for that.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes. Again, this past Saturday, I had the pleasure to go to, um, Point of Honor for the day at the point. Um, I want to commend-
I want to commend our museum system of Mr. Delaney for doing a wonderful event. They had over 3,000 persons, I think it was up of over 1,000 people. They even mentioned that one of the food trucks sold out of everything. So with the entertainment they had, with the petting zoo, and so many family, such a great, family-friendly event. It's so wonderful to live in our city and see all the great things that are going on. It was a beautiful day. So I just want to commend the staff at Point of Honor and Mr. Delaney and all the personnel that came out to support that event.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
No, I didn't accept it. Randy did not mention the life-size cow that he transported to be out in front of the school. It was pretty incredible.
It was a very moving day.
Yeah, moving.
And we have, yeah, I do want to say, thank you. Did you have anything else? Thank you, it was a great event, and the creativity of the staff at the school at Paramount,